Um, it is seven oh seven and we'll call the meeting to order. The first item is to review the agenda for additions, removals, adjustments with any items. I sent out some stuff late this afternoon that should have been attached, but wasn't. It was late to the game, so there is um. The minutes for the October third meeting that were sent out just this afternoon, and there are two documents. Um, that are related to public notice and communication. Hopefully. Seen those or have, are there any other? Additions and alterations to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll um keep it as it is and keep going. So the next topic, we put in a public comment at the beginning. Of the meeting as well as one we typically have at the end of the meeting and. We've allowed five minutes for public comment, hopefully we can. Kind of keep to that allotment depending on what people have to say. Um, through pieces of protocol, conversations, public and commission members should be addressed to the chair. Uh, my discussion with each other. Was best that the commission members listen to what the public has to say, it's not a time for debate necessarily. And publicly planning commission will remind, remain mindful of the, in their deliberations of public comment, so. With that in mind, we have people interested in making statements. Who would like to go first? Can you, so Tom, Tom Fox?
Yes, my name is Tom Fox. And um, I'm going to agree my statement. Requested change to the United Development Regulations.
But can you come up a little bit closer?
May I sit at the table?
Absolutely.
Okay, request a change to the United Development Regulations. Our request that the conditional use business yard be removed from the RA five zoning description on page twenty six. And that the C be removed from the RA five column in the table on page sixteen for the reasons listed below. The quotes in this statement are from the U D R. The definition of business yard includes. A site used primarily to store and maintain construction landscaping or similar heavy equipment. And other materials and facilities customarily required by a contractor in the building landscaping or construction related trades. Or similar businesses. Where the majority of business activity takes place offsite. End of that quote. The objectives and guidelines for RA five includes. The purpose of this this district is to allow for the maintenance. Of towns working farmland, forest land and open spaces. While providing opportunities for low density rural living and resource based small businesses. The desired character of this district is that of rural countryside. Where residential development is compatible with and surrounded by agricultural uses, forest uses. And open spaces, end of that quote. In my opinion, these two statements are incompatible. A site used to store and maintain construction, landscaping or similar heavy equipment and other materials. Is not compatible with the objectives and guidelines stated. To allow low density rural living and resource based small businesses. Storing, maintaining and especially transporting heavy equipment and materials is not compatible with the idea of rural countryside. If a business yard is used to store construction materials such as topsoil and gravel between jobs. The noise created by heavy equipment moving that material and the movement of the heavy equipment itself is disturbing to the neighborhood. Heavy equipment used by a contractor in the building, landscaping or construction related trades is not consistent with the objectives. And guideline statement for small businesses. Unless there is a limit on the size of the equipment used in the business yard. Others zoning descriptions where a business yard may be permitted are commercial, C one. And village mixed, V N. RA five zoning is closer to RA two zoning than either C one or V N. RA two does not permit conditional use business yard. The objectives and guidelines for C one and V N zoning descriptions are essentially different from RA five and RA two. In that they do not seek to promote the character of rural countryside for RA, RA five or. Rural character for RA two. I believe and feel that the intent of RA five zoning is that of a neighborhood where small businesses may exist. With residential dwellings and not a place for construction related trades or small businesses. Examples of resource based small businesses include, but are not limited to. Sugar maple production, seamstress, daycare, farming, woodworking. Where the business is confined to family members or perhaps one or two employees. This is a place where the residents live and work. Without producing noise that is distressing to the neighbors.
Thanks.
Okay, are there any questions?
Don't see any.
Is this in response to something?
Well, it is, alright, so uh, one of your previous meetings. Uh, either the last one or the one before, there was a discussion about the definition for a business yard. And um, that got me to thinking that I had the opportunity. To state my um, my opinion.
Okay. So Tom, Tom did forward that to the offices by hand, so I can distribute that to the entire commission if that's desired.
Could we make that a part of the record at this meeting?
In fact, if you would like, you could have my copy.
That's kind, thank you.
And. Uh, it may work better to get to the uh.
My name is Carol Wells and um, my husband and I own Bristol Suites in downtown Bristol. And um, I'm here as a resource, I know you've been discussing the definition of inn versus um. Air or a bed and breakfast and hotel. And um, we would encourage you to not require the owner or resident manager for an inn. I think that would seriously uh, limit the possibility. Of uh, having successful inn downtown and um. I think that that's not a consequence that you would like to promote. Um, and I don't uh, see that there's a very good logical reason to require that. Um, for it in. So um, I'm here to act as a resource, if you have any questions about being an innkeeper or the. Finances of an inn or economics, um, that may help give you information to make a decision. I'd be happy to do so. What, what questions do you have?
Um, hi, this is Anna Taylor, I'm over here, um, but I'm, I'm not in the room, I'm, I'm on Zoom, so I think um. Thank you for coming, Carol, appreciate you um stating where you're coming from. I think a, as someone who lives in the village, um, who has actually stayed at your inn before. So that's my context, um, and obviously we, we like to have a resource in town. Um, I think that, that. One of the things I always look at when we look at proposed changes to our regulations is to really try to consider what is appropriate for. All potential iterations, current, future, right, um, of an inn. And what would be reasonable to actually attract someone to want to do this in our little town, right, um. And then also what would make it a good experience for those who live near around, um, and you know. Engaged with the people who are staying at the inn or parking at the inn or coming and going. Um, and I think that, that I can understand the financial constraints. Of needing to have someone occupy one of your available spaces, right, in your inn, like, okay, now I have to have someone who. Even if they don't live here, they can spend twenty four hours here, right, or in shifts spend twenty four hours here. Um, how would you propose, if, if you know, we're having a conversation about this, um. To make it possible for um, anyone who has a question for the innkeeper or, you know, in, in the case of somebody that isn't right. Has a complaint or a concern or an emergency or just a neighborly issue, um, how would you propose? Addressing that if you don't have someone who is either the owner occupied or the resident manager of, of the inn? I'm just curious from your, from your perspective, since you do this.
Uh, and we certainly considered that when we, uh, I mean, we did live there for um, ten years. Um. Uh, over the eleven years since we started the inn. Uh, we've had a twenty four hour, seven day a week uh, answering service that um. People can call and uh, they track us down within minutes and we can respond. Uh, to the issue. Um, I think we've only had something happen once. Where actually a, a guest left the water running, she went into. To talk to her husband and forgot she had left the water running and I, I'm not quite sure how it overflowed the sink, why the safety thing didn't kick in. But it came down through the second floor all the way down to the first floor, the water. And actually, I was in the building that night and I found out about it because they called our number, the answering service called me. And you know, I happened to be there a few minutes, but. Uh, you know, I was in the building and didn't even know that the uh, that incident had happened until the answering service. So I think with the answering service, um, you know, they're really good, we have a whole protocol. If they call one person and uh, we're supposed to call them back and say, I got your message. If, if we uh, don't respond, they go down the list, call the next person, call the next person, you know, until. Uh, they do reach somebody in an emergency.
And, and you're providing this number obviously to people who are staying at your inn, that makes sense. Um, is it also just out of curiosity, something that you post publicly or not? I'm just curious.
Uh, yes, it's actually on our front door.
Okay.
The front door of the inn. And it says it's our answering service, note to call.
Um, thank you.
If we don't pick it up, if uh, it's our main number, if we don't pick it up after three rings, it goes to the answering service.
Thank you so much, Carol, I appreciate your answers.
So we have, and I didn't say it to Tom, I should have, but we did revise. In our draft to that permission. Hotel and guest facility, so.
Okay, inn and guest, okay.
I don't know if you've seen that.
No, I haven't.
We, we, it's chose revised, but we haven't voted on that.
Right.
That's right, so it's.
It's draft form, not.
Well, it's, it's not approved by this committee to go forward into the draft that goes forward to what the select board and, and thereon, right?
Yes. Part of the discussion for this evening, so that's. We are considering it, I guess you could say.
Okay, I have a question, when it says um, at all times. Manager or personnel on duty all times, would the twenty four hour answering service count as that?
No.
I think that was the reason for my question in part, Carol, and, and I, I totally get where you're coming from, right, I mean, I know it's, it's hard to have. Availability, right, but I think that, you know, um, an answering service. May or may not be able to get you someone on site, right, right away. You know, I mean, I, I get it, like, if you have a person on call and it's you or your husband or whoever might be working for you, covering for you out of town. And you don't pick up, then the answering service gets it, it's like, okay, I got an answering service. But I think it's, it's, that doesn't quite tick the box, right, because it's not, oh, this person is on duty. And if something, someone needs to come right away, they're close enough that they can be there right away. Um, I think that's the distinction, not being unsympathetic to your realities, and I know you're, you know, your answering service is obviously. Meeting a critical need for your guests and obviously potentially any neighbors who might need to contact you, but. Inside of the definition, just to be clear, that, that doesn't qualify. Um. So that, that is a distinction, it's a, it's, it's a compromise, I guess you could say, but it's, it's not, it's not, doesn't meet the requirement.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and what is the logic behind that? I mean, why for ins and not other businesses? That somebody has to be on duty.
Who does your answering service call?
Well, first they call me and if I don't answer, they call, we have two innkeepers, they call them, if no, they don't get back, then they call. Uh, our handyman, we have a whole list.
You've got a hierarchy.
They've never, yeah, and we've always, and then, you know, they call back, if nobody calls, they go through it again. Um, we've never had a case where nobody's responded.
So in essence, you've got people on call.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think.
Right.
Yeah, this is, and I want to be very clear about this because I think this is really important, right? It's not a consideration of the Bristol Suites and the Wells family in this case, we're trying to write regulations that would work. No matter who owned an inn, and then something that, you know, I think you guys have been. Good citizens, good members of our community, you're trying to put a solution in place, right? We want to make sure that regulations make it very, very clear what the requirements are. It's why it's under discussion, it's why it's a draft, we haven't approved it, we're talking about what would allow us to make. A regulation that's reasonable for a business owner to actually meet the requirement, that also would protect our village, our neighbors. Even the guests of such a facility, right, but I think in particular, thinking about sort of where does this facility operate? In our overall environment in our community, in a way that's positive and it's very clear, particularly, and I'm not, this is. This is why I'm trying to separate it from you, right, and your particular business. What if something isn't good, right, what, what are the protections, options? I wouldn't say consequences, but protections and options, if we have an innkeeper that isn't. A good member of our community, and it is difficult, you know, what recourse would neighbors who are having to deal with something that's not a good situation have? So it's very separate from you, I'm trying to be very clear, this is not about your business and your request, but what's great for our community? Right, in the best possible case scenario, and unfortunately, in a worst case possible scenario, what makes for a good community? And I think that's, that's good zoning to think about what's a good rule in general. Not what's a good rule, knowing this particular owner, this particular business, and we're talking about that. So I totally hear where you're coming from, I try to keep it separate.
Yeah, I'd like to call it here because it seems like we're getting more into the debate. Of the definition as opposed to listening to what Carol has to say. Um, if you have any closing comments or not.
Uh, I just, I had a question, I don't think I got answered. Why specifically is this for an inn and not other businesses?
I, I have a history behind when we did this back in, I think it was twenty seventeen when we first added this. Um, we were seeing a um, large number of hotel motel, actually motels. Um, we were looking at through Seven Corridor in particular, from Burgess to Middlebury, there was a handful of, for lack of better terms, notel motels.
Mm-hmm.
That were, had gone from their heyday to not very, and we did not want to see. That occur in our community, so we wanted to make sure that there was some accountability in that situation, not, and. So in all, either the inn or the uh, B and B, there's an owner involved. Um, and to make sure that it, large organizations usually had staff in, at all times, so that was, that was the rationale back in twenty seventeen when we did that. So hopefully that helps.
It is required for a B and Bs. Uh, owner occupancy.
Well, I think the B and B here is defined as an owner, it usually is somebody's house, they have a couple, fewer rooms and.
Six or less, I think is how it's defined, and then inn is twelve or less, and then the hotel is more than that.
Right.
And the uh, B and B and the inn are owner occupied. Can you see a reason, like, I don't see a, a strong reason to change it, what, what would be the reason to change it?
So.
Well, no, I, we're, we're getting. We're getting into debate and this was public comment, so at risk of dragging this in further. I would ask that we hold off on debating this.
Yeah, that's fine, I would just flag for future discussion.
And I'm happy to answer that question, I was coming as a resource as well as public comments because. Um, I understood that there was some question and it might be helpful to have somebody who's actually an innkeeper. Um, why is it bad? Because I think it makes it more difficult to be economically financed, find an economically. Uh, positive thing for somebody to come in and um, you know, open an, an inn. Uh, I mean, it's. Um, if you have to take one of your units and turn it into a, a living. Uh, unit for a manager or for the owner, you are decreasing the income, which makes it. Less viable, economically viable to have in, in, in a small downtown.
I can see that, but I, I would also point out that it's also just as likely that the owner occupant, um, benefits from, you know. Their shelter costs by being resident in the, in the. I don't know, I can think of an objection to that, but.
So if you want to hang around. Till we get to the point of discussing that further, you're welcome to, but I'd like to. Cut the comments and go along with the agenda. Uh, it's towards the end.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes, it is, which is on, so um, yeah. We usually end up at about quarter to nine, so it would be. Eight to nine, something like that.
Okay. Alright, I'll hang right for a moment.
Thank you. Okay, so. We'll move on to the next item. Which is continuing to work the modernization grant work and over, with the overall review of the. Development regs, so this is our final meeting. Review what we've done. Uh, we need to wrap up discussions in order to have public meetings which are in process, they're November seventh and twenty first. And we can see the light in the, in the tunnel. So the items that were raised at the roundtable on October third are all part of the chair notes which were distributed and there's actually copies. On the table if you want one. Um, priority, I mean, some of these issues are over and above or beyond what we need to do. For grant requirements, the priority will be to settle on the grant requirements. And hopefully get everything that's on the table. Decided. Um. Again. Just have crisp conversations with proposed word changes, any area of concern. Um, as, as the conversation drags on, it takes time, it's taking time out of some other thing that we're doing. I want to rely on Adam's wisdom. If we get into an arbitrary discussion, and then there's semantics about state regs and. What we can do and what we can't do, or what's the meaning of some of the common um. Verbage with regards to state regs that he will act as a final arbitrator tonight. And hopefully move the conversation along so that we don't end up in a discussion about what the reg says and doesn't say. So with that.
Can I ask a quick question about the timing? What is the rush? I understand that there's a, some, some discount on the.
We've talked about this, but we've got a grant commitment that has a um. A forgiveness of the matching funds, which is insignificant, but the bigger issue, far as I'm concerned, is. We have a grant requirement that we wrap this up. By the end of the month and we've gotten a buy to actually have a vote if the select board agrees to at town meeting, but. We've committed to have this done by the end of December, so in order to do that, we need to have our. Hearings, that's the planning commission in November, so the select board can have their hearing in December and finish it off.
No, I understand.
So. We've talked at length for, this has been going on for two years, we've talked at length. And some of the times, quite honestly, I'm not sure we used our time well. Through the process of um, once we retain that regional planning commission, but nonetheless, we're walking down this path. And we're bumping right up against deadlines and if we don't do it, yeah, okay, nothing happens, we're not going to jail. But the credibility of this planning commission and the town as far as seeking grants could be compromised.
And last night at the select board meeting, they were, they were very clear that they would like this wrapped up, I mean, so it can be um. Put it on by the population in March, so they're decided, they've decided to do it.
District, so.
Um.
So, yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Kevin, and I'm, I'm sorry to, to, you know, maybe be the neophyte here, um, but. That my understanding was that the select board could have elected to, to vote on these themselves. But they have elected to take it at a town meeting instead, is, is that, I just want to make sure I understand that, the procedure.
That's fair, would S one hundred or Act forty seven or whatever you want to call it. Gave the legislative body the authority to approve them administratively as opposed to a vote. Um, and.
Last evening they chose not to do that, they chose to have the public vote on them at town meeting day.
Yeah, so it was an issue on the agenda last night.
That, that makes it, that makes the urgency more comprehensible to me, I think before. I was like, well, wait a minute, if the select board can vote on this anytime, then what is the urgency other than the grant forgiveness, which I do understand, every dollar counts, right? Like the, the matching would be forgiven if we met a certain deadline. And I, you have a fair point about the credibility, but this one, the fact that it has to make it to the, the town meeting deadlines, I understand with all the. The warnings and everything else, thank you for clarifying, thank you so much.
So I just, again, I just, I bring that up so we can have crisp conversations and move through what is a doable list that remains.
Okay, um, actually, Chris, can I take, can we go to the, the map first? Um, I revised the map from our last meeting, I want to make sure we get it right, it should be quick and it should be easy. Um, and I want to make sure it's accurate, um, and reflects the decisions that you all made at the last meeting. So Chris is sharing it now. Um. And go down to the, the last ones, that is the last one, okay. So it's a little hard to distinguish between the light blue and the uh. Um, the darker blue. Um, but let's see, when you started off, you had uh, HDR as kind of a, a buffer between your um. Residential district and the village districts. Um, at one point you had decided to change that. At our last meeting, you decided to change a portion of that back. Basically north of Plank Road, so we talked about basically changing it back north of Plank Road and. The one parcel, the one large parcel south of Plank Road, um, that Chris has his cursor on, if you can all see that now. So, um, there were, there are probably about twenty parcels, um, impacted and it basically goes. Most of them go back to what currently exists now. So you reduced the scale or the, the increase in the HDR district.
So Rob, you were the one that I believe made the motion, does that meet what you intended?
Yeah, that was what we had discussed and come to.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay.
Okay, great, then we can move on and where we left off last meeting. Um, was we were talking about basically duplexes and specifically duplexes within the HDR district. And whether or not we should give a density bonus for this duplexes, whether we should treat them. With the um, basically as allowed in the same footprint as a single family unit. So in essence, twice the density, or whether we should leave it the same. Um, and that was kind of your homework that um, that all of you went home with was to uh. Think about that so we can continue that discussion now. I will tell you, I was at, I was at a meeting for um, S one hundred today, basically it was a, it was a VLCT workshop this morning. Um, and you know, this item is, is one of the items that they um. Well, VLCT and. Well, VLCT and the Agency of Commerce are a little up in the air about, and that is um. Something that S one hundred says is that duplexes shall be treated basically the same as. Uh, single family residents, they'll have the same uh dimensional requirements. Um, the question came up, well, is. Basically, a unit density um the same as a dimensional requirement, and they did not have an answer for it. So they said, I mean, their answer was maybe. So it's, you could certainly um say S one hundred wants the density bonus to be the same for a duplex as for a single family. Um, and I I think Chris brought this up early on in our discussions as something that he felt might work for Bristol. Um, Kevin had proposed just a twenty five percent density bonus as things stand right now, basically. Um, you. Your zoning work zoning um bylaws work on um. A density per acre, so sent or and a unit per acre, so since duplexes have two units. They require twice as much land area under your current zoning as single family units.
Any questions? So I'm not clear on, you said something about S one hundred said. A duplex would have the same dimensional standards as a single family house, does that mean?
Setbacks have to be the same.
Setbacks would be the same.
Frontage would be the same. Yes.
But the question.
Footprint could be the same. The question could be, you know, would you include basically? Unit density as a dimensional requirement. And and honestly, I come down on the side that says probably not, it's not a dimensional thing, it's a, the unit density is something separate. But there are towns that are interpreting it that way. And it's tough to, in our regs, we actually have it in the dimensional standards section. It is part of your dimensional standard section.
But the other, the other thing is that when we started out, we decided that we weren't going to do anything dramatic to HDR. Because there were some strong feelings that what we've got is working and let's just leave alone. So if we change and say.
Duplexes would have the same, you could build a duplex on the same lot size as you could a single family residence, so in essence, you're. Doubling the density there. I I think you could interpret S one hundred that way. I did not, I I it didn't, I don't think unit density and. Dimensional requirements are necessarily the same thing.
I'm not clear on the question at hand, I mean. If and what the result of one course of action is versus the other.
So we're talking about basically whether, we're talking about duplexes, specifically just duplexes. And we're talking about the HDR district and whether or not you would like to. Give some type of density bonus for people to build duplexes, Kevin suggested twenty five percent, I believe at the last meeting. I just, we just, I just talked about H one hundred, that's in essence a hundred percent density bonus. Or you can leave it the same. So those are your three questions, those are your three choices.
I hate to to, again, I'm gonna be the person, but I I would really appreciate if we could have a concrete example. So if I have a half acre lot in HDR. And I have a single family home on it right now, um, if we were to. To 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 make no changes, then you really can't replace my home with anything other than my home, a single family. If we made a change and we said, oh, yep, okay, like, you could put a duplex there on the same footprint. Or are we doing something in between? I I I don't, I I would, a real, a real life example would be really helpful. To understand what it is we're actually trying to do.
Um, you've said a half acre and we've said HDR district. That basically allows um four units per acre, so theoretically, under your existing zoning, you could put another. Single family home on um basically your property, or you could turn your property into a duplex.
Or I could tear it down and build a duplex.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm just playing with with examples, okay. And if I had an acre, I could do. Four units in one, or I could do two duplexes or four single family homes. In high density residential under our current regs.
That's correct.
Okay. So how would this change it, this density bonus?
If the twenty five percent density bonus would give you, basically if you had that acre again. You'd go from a being allowed four units plus a twenty five percent density bonus, one a, one additional unit, so. Um, with that acre, you could build four single family homes, five single family homes, one single family home and two two duplexes. That would be the twenty five percent density bonus.
Could you do that if the density bonuses for duplexes only?
Uh, all right, um, you're right.
So I I see it as kind of, there, it's a stepped question, density bonus, yes or no? And then what is the density bonus and how is it applied, whether it's one hundred percent? Twenty five percent to the overall project or just the second unit? Cause there's a lot of options that we were throwing around last time and how it would be handled, so I think we need to decide. Density bonus for duplex, yes or no? Or anything, and then go from there of. What it is.
Okay, I think that's a helpful thought progression, if if you all. The percentage one is top. Yeah, for and again, I'm just looking and trying to calculate that out in the future.
So I don't, I I'm not thinking about building. Cause HDR is pretty well built out, I'm thinking about.
The four tenths.
The house across the street from me. It's a big old town aid, it's not the Bristol Palace, it's big old town aid. And is sitting on less than half an acre. I don't know exactly what it is, but since it's sitting on less than half an acre. The only thing you can do with that. House, which is large, is have a single family house. If you have a density bonus of, I threw out twenty five percent, that gets you down to point four acres. It gets you a whole lot closer to the size of existing lots with existing large houses on them. In the village, so then, again, I don't know, but let's say that that. House across the street is sitting on point four one acres. So all of a sudden, if you had a twenty five percent bonus, you could convert that to a duplex. Where. Otherwise, you're stuck with a single family house.
May I, may I speak? Uh, we already have per force by S one hundred, the ability to have an accessory dwelling unit on that property. So the point four one acre person could have another dwelling unit already. And since we're not. Since that house is not serviced by sewer, that is all they're really going to be. Able to do is have the two. So giving a small dwell, giving some sort of a change so that they could have a duplex would only allow them to have the same two units ultimately. Am I right or wrong?
You, the number, the number's correct, the difference would be whether the ADU is only a third at most, if a third is more than nine hundred.
And one bedroom.
And one bedroom, as opposed to if it's a four bedroom house, splitting it in two and having two, two bedroom halls.
So that, you know, there's no bedroom. But so the other thing.
But just a minute, Kevin, so I'm just want to put my two cents in that I think that is actually a benefit. And it'll be a little, the smaller unit would be more appropriate for. People with lesser incomes and I would like to somehow. Lean this personally, I would like to lean this toward smaller units. Might fit better in the village, A, but B, would also be more comfortably affordable by people who are less wealthy. Okay, thank you.
So to to kind of trail on that. Slim, and I've been trying to. Figure out in my mind when the right time is to say this, but. I was looking at Heinsberg's regs this week and for an ADU, now we get back into bad term here. For an ADU, they have a sliding scale and. Your point may be the thing and then just don't have a density bonus for duplexes. They had a sliding scale, so if your house was less than, let me see if I can find it. So if your house is less than sixteen hundred square feet, if your house is between twelve hundred and sixteen hundred square feet. You can have an ADU seventy five percent of dwelling or nine hundred feet. If your house is between sixteen hundred and four thousand, you can have a maximum size ADU of twelve hundred square feet. If your house is over four thousand, you can have an ADU that's thirty percent of the principal dwelling. So they're stepping it, so in the case of the house next door that I referred to before, nine hundred square foot. ADU is not the best use of that house still, but if you allow the twelve hundred square foot ADU in there. It it makes sense, and then maybe we don't battle the our density bonus with. Duplexes.
Uh, how that makes sense, uh, uh, and from my point of view, it just means an extra car, et cetera. And a little harder to afford, anyway. That's me.
Are there um. Dwelling sizes, the square footages, is that based off livable space or footprint?
So they say. Size refers to livable floor area of the structure, i.e. areas that are finished condition eating, in other words, ADUs can have decks, garages, greenporters, et cetera. And these do not count towards the maximum size allowance, this is the Heinsberg.
Right, so so their single family home, if it's two stories. Eight hundred square foot footprint, two stories would be sixteen hundred square foot. They they would be based on, correct? In theirs.
In the living.
For the, for the living spaces, each floor stack counts, right?
What if they have a finished basement, that's, you know, extirpized room and TV room or something.
That's finished base.
So that's three stories at that.
Potentially, I was just looking at how they calculated that, cause we do footprint, so.
So the state statute for, and we're a little off track. State statute for ADUs basically says the greater of thirty percent or ninety, nine hundred square feet. What they did, those numbers basically mimic that. And give you nine hundred square feet, yeah, so.
But the nice thing about that is there is that. Plateau, if you will, on average sized houses, that's twelve hundred square feet.
Is this footprint or or livable space again? I I'm confused. Livable space, good. Thank you.
I think. So if somebody is on a, I'm just using your point four one acre lot, a single family home. And for whatever reason they tear it down, what can they rebuild there? They're not converting the house. They're choosing to tear it down and then they start again, so they get a duplex of. Up to what square footage if they're proposing to do that?
Point four in the house, they couldn't do a duplex.
It's five thousand square foot footprint, maximum in HDR.
Footprint for.
Principal structure.
It's a big house.
That's a huge house.
And I I would add on a a follow up question to that, which I think is sort of something that, again, I like real life examples. I think we also need to be considering then, and it's good to think about real life examples, how tall could that structure be? What what's our height limit? So thirty five feet, right?
Basically, three stories and roof.
Yeah, so I I think it's just something to consider, right, and I I think John's question leads to. Sort of a question that I've been having all along is I'm excited to consider all of our draft changes. For me, in order to actually make an informed choice. Exactly what what you guys have kind of been doing, Kevin, John, like coming up with an actual example in each of our zones and saying. What could happen on this lot, right? Not, you know, change to existing, addition of an EDU, tear it all down and start over, for me. To make an informed choice for our community, I I need to understand that better. Um, maybe that's a big ask, I I hope it's something we could do relatively quickly. But I think that's what we all keep coming back to is, wait, what could you do there? Wait, what what, what does that mean? What footprint? What square footage, right? And I think that's something that our voters are going to be very interested to understand as well.
So a a real life example of a duplex on a small lot that really has minimal impact. Uh, there's one on Taylor Avenue. Uh, if you tee out Film Street on Taylor Avenue, it's the second, it's the, or come off Pleasant Street, it's the second house on the left. It was a single family home, it was split into a duplex. You would never know.
I would say that's. A nice example of village living, you know, it's like, they like their 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 places, the neighbors, you know, it all seems to work. I think my question is, what if the owner of that property tore that down? What could they rebuild there? And what would a thirty five foot tall building look like there? That's my question.
Houses in your village already.
Yeah, yes, but but they're they're different kinds, right?
Lots of different kinds.
Yeah, our our, our house is full a lot more than thirty five feet.
For sure it is, Kevin, right, but you know, you know, you sit on some land, right? Your neighbors aren't super close, I want you to try and imagine that with our our proposed setbacks, right? You know, where could you put that house? What would that feel like for a neighbor? It's a consideration.
The tower, as nice as it is, I have a tower too, but it's not like a full residential floor.
Own a tower, but.
So and I I'd only offer that at this point, picking up on Slim, because if there is interest. In doing a stepped ADU a lot, if you will. I'm I'm not sure that from my point of view, and I'm the one that brought up the density bonus for duplexes, we let that. We set that aside and adopt a stepped. Um, ADU parameters like Heinsberg.
So what you're doing is basically calling the question on the duplexes and and saying, do you want to, and I'm going to use Rob's. Uh, example, do you want to give density bonuses for ADUs, or excuse me, for duplexes or not? And that was kind of the first half of the question, and and if so, what is it? Um, so let's go to the first half of the question.
Okay, so um. Do we need to form a motion or can we do this stones?
I still am wrestling with my own lack of understanding how density bonuses work. And um, what the event, you know, like. I'm still unclear on.
If you want people to, if you want people to be able to build duplexes in your village. Um, you will make it easier for them to build duplexes in your village by giving them a density bonus. Um, it will help them overcome some of the the constraints on lot sizes. Um, that you have, so right now in your HDR district, basically you get four units per acre. Four units can be one multifamily, four units can be two duplexes, four units can be four single family residences. The question with is, if you want to promote duplexes, you could give a density bonus for duplexes. Making it easier for people to build a little denser within the village of Bristol, and there are, there are lots of other considerations.
And the way that works, like a couple of quick questions, like, so if somebody comes in, they've got X number of lot, point four acres, whatever. Uh, and uh, they're. They're not able to do it, you calculate the density bonus that they want to do it, they want to do a duplex, they want to create density. So, well, okay, the density bonus, it's really like they need less land to be able to do that, and that's.
That's what the density bonus says right now.
Yeah, the language says, oh, you're adding something, but really you're making that. Lot size, necessary lot size, smaller, that's part of where the confusion comes in, if you follow me. So don't density bonus, but actually, we're just saying you need less land.
Yes.
To do this thing.
Yes.
And is there not a more straightforward way of saying that in legislative lan- language, could we just reduce the lot size requirement, would that be clearer?
You could say, basically, you could build. You could say, basically, you could build um duplexes. On the same sized lot as a uh as a single family resident.
And then the builder of the duplex, let's say they scoop off the existing house, they're starting from scratch, they. They're limited by the lot coverage regulations and the setbacks, of course, but uh, so that limits. They can't go right out to the edge of the lot and have a giant duplex. Just because they're starting from scratch.
Right, they still have to abide by all of the other regulations that limit your single family dwellings as well.
Well, there aren't many, are there?
There are basically dimensional requirements.
Right, so um, the prince maximum principal structure size. Is that, when it's a duplex, is that the principal counts both units? As since it's in one structure, so it's still five thousand square feet for a duplex or a single family home. A duplex does not get to be ten thousand square feet footprint, because it's two units.
Structure, that's why.
No, just for clarity.
Alright, that that's.
Same with the multifamily.
Structure size.
Yeah, okay.
Gain clarity, thank you.
So the question is. Thumbs up, thumbs down on a density, density bonus, is that where we're at?
Density bonuses for duplex, should you allow be allowed to build a duplex on? Basically, the same size lot as a single family resident is one way to think of it. That's a that's a hundred percent density bonus. This is a, this is a twenty-five percent density bonus.
And and the understate statue with these, we can um review for parking, so a duplex is going to have some parking. Essentially two driveways, two driveways worth of.
Parking spaces.
Okay, so John is saying review. Well, it's a permitted use, so it doesn't go before DRV.
Well, but towns are permitted to review for parking, right?
You can have parking regulations that allow for one, basically one spot per unit.
Which we currently have.
Which you currently have.
So that would be something that the zoning administrator would look at to evaluate that permit. So the question on the table and lacking the formality of motion will do a thumbs up. If we're in favor of a duplex. Density bonus and thumbs down if you aren't.
And right now we're only talking about HDR.
In HDR. Okay.
Kevin, what what percentage density bonus are we talking about?
We haven't decided that yet.
If this passes, then we'll go there. If this doesn't pass, there's no need to.
So the question is a- a- any, any bonus at all, and then we'll figure out what it might be?
Yes.
Okay.
So thumbs up, thumbs down? Six, okay.
Can you see my thumb there? Yeah.
Six. So then the question is, how significant a density bonus would you like to allow for duplexes in your HDR districts?
Which is another way of saying how small a lot would you?
Yes, so I'd almost ask you, should. Um, should you all be allowed to build a duplex basically on the same lot as a single family house?
I would say so, makes it simple.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
Simple is good.
So you're saying we could have four duplexes on an acre if we do that?
That's that's what the math on that one comes up to, yes. Twenty-five percent would get you one extra on an acre.
So if you have a half acre lot, you could have two duplexes, four units.
Under the first scenario, yes, under the second scenario. You might be able to get a duplex.
The first scenario being?
One hundred percent, that's same, same.
A one hundred percent density bonus.
You could have, you could have two duplexes on a half acre, four du- four duplexes on an acre, two duplexes on a half acre. To answer your question.
Otherwise, you're talking about one single family dwelling and one duplex on the half acre. The next, next choice, is that correct? Three units instead of two?
With the.
Yes.
Quarter acre per duplex. Sounds like a lot to me.
Yeah, all of a sudden you're eight units per acre.
Yeah, it does, I I'm, that gives me some pause.
I mean, that goes back to where, I mean, my thoughts were just bump it to five units break or for HDR, no matter what they are.
Yeah, but it's the problem of that is we're changing the density HDR where we at one point were very. Very serious or we were, we didn't want to change the character and that, going to that five. Will change the character, the post, going to a duplex. I I believe. It's just my, it's just me, and I've said it before, with these bigger older houses in the villagers, they're 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 primed for. More for more than a single family house and we haven't done anything yet to.
Well, they're also primed for knocking down and building as much as the law allows, which is something that's happening everywhere else in the country. But here, and even in Chitting County, it's happening that close, but here it hasn't quite gotten there yet, but that's. What goes on. I would note that uh, for me, like if you were saying you could put uh two duplexes on a half acre lot. Four units, I think multifamily, which is a four unit thing, right, for four habitations. And I would just note that uh, according to our prior conversations such, uh, we've gotten to the point where. Uh, in HDR, just looking at HDR, multifamily dwelling is a conditional use, so. Uh, it does bother me a little bit when you think about the density of, say, two duplexes, four units anyway on that. Um, and just being something that gets zero review. So, I mean, if a duplex is a duplex, um. Talks about the structure, but like, we want to talk, I mean, we talk about uses on the property and there's like some. You know, four uses that are, four residential uses or four residential uses, whether it's under one roof or two roofs or four, it's still four. And with the anticipated impacts, similar, so. Uh, I understand that the state of Vermont doesn't want us to regulate single and duplex, single family and duplex housing, so I'm worried about a backend. Kind of run around our multifamily um situation if we create where you could have four units. You just call them two dup- you just make two duplexes instead of a multifamily, so that uh. I'm not, I'm quite a piece with that.
So let's go around the table and shoot out a number and see if we're sort of thinking the right. Um, we're we're centering on a percentage of bonus, does that make sense?
Yes.
So, Rob, what do you think?
I think to apply a bonus uh for duplexes. Duplexes would be considered a density of five units per acre, which means for one duplex, you would need point four acres. Otherwise, you get into how is it applied, you just have a different density. Because it works out that clean, that it's point four acres.
For.
For duplexes.
As a standard here, would just say point four. Point four is the twenty-five percent.
Or basically, it works out slightly differently. You do, depending on how you apply the twenty-five percent, is it to the second unit? Or to the overall project, that's where we were getting hung up before. So I don't like the idea of having different densities for different things, but it is clean in the end. At five units per acre for duplexes, duplexes require point four acres to build one. Or you just say duplexes require point four acres.
Per duplex?
Per duplex.
So point eight if you want to, or more.
Right.
Well, it'd be point. Nine, right? No.
No. Point eight.
Okay, so you go from point five to point four and just say, just say if you're going to build a duplex. You can cite that on point four acres.
Yeah, that's that's my thought, then it's not a dramatic step, you're still, you're not going to. Six units per acre or eight units per acre, you're you're adding one more in there, but it does. Meet that requirement of all those point four blank acre. Lots, lots within the village that seem like they're plenty big enough compared to some of the ones that point five one, if you have one that's point four six. Doesn't seem like that much difference in why you can or can't do it.
But if you're point three six, you're out of luck.
Yeah.
For even one duplex.
Yep.
But you're always, there's always going to be a line somewhere.
Yeah.
No, I'm not versed to some lines, but I'm just making it clear.
Yeah.
Hey Slim, what do you think?
I like that. I like point four, that sounds great, very clean.
Shannon, what do you think?
I agree with Rob on that, it's it's a, that's a way cleaner way to follow through with all this. It's a nice, it's a clean line.
Bill, what do you think?
I like Rob's idea.
And John?
I like it, um, it it does address my concerns for. You know, just people shoehorning all kinds of stuff in, I would add the uh. That uh, I'd like to see us, and I think we'll address this later, so I'm not going to harp on it, but uh. You know, I'd like to be able to see in the case of a property owner that creates one duplex, that they might also have a path to having an ADU as well. So that would be a third minor unit on the property. And that that would then allow u- under certain conditions that they could be met uh. Uh, for a little slightly more density um on a smaller scale and um. Alleviate the concern that I have of uh of. Insensitive densifying development done by people who don't actually live here.
Anna, what do you think?
Um, I like that that it was simplified to something that's clear, that a property owner could understand. Point four equals duplex possible, um, so I'm on board with that, I think that makes a lot more sense than talking about a bonus or anything else. That, hey, this is how it is, if you have point four, guess what you can do? Um, if you have point three, nope, point five, different rules, but that makes it nice and clean.
Okay, thanks, so.
Whether you use or not.
Quick question for Adam, just to clarify, so uh, out of village lots, I know you went over this, I just don't remember, but. Are most point four and above, I forget how that's uh sort of breaks out, you don't have to go through the super details, just rough memory, like. Where does point four land us in this sort of?
Probably in your HDR zone, most of your units were between. A third of an acre and half an acre, so there are going to be basically winners and losers.
I mean, the the traditional village's lot, when the village is created, were quarter acre lots, is what the vision was. Um, so that, but there are a bunch of double lots out there and like minus point four and.
Well, there were, and there were quite a few one acre lots too, you know.
So there was a study that Chris and I did a while ago, looking at duplexes and multifamilies. And if you don't have the hand, you can forward that.
That'd be great, thank you. I do remember, I have a uh recollection of discussing sort of where the curve is for lot size, but it's just not fresh.
It's not, it's. It is uh not methodical, it's just kind of like hit or miss or what you thought.
Yeah, you kind of counted them up and see what the distribution was, and the four is sort of at the top of the bell curve, is that fair enough to stop point four rather? It's sort of.
It's probably pretty close to the top of the bell curve, it's 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 up there, it's not down here, that's for sure.
So I would only raise one question based on that, is there any sense to having it slightly under point four? I don't know, you landed on point four, I could be happy with that.
But it was, it was the cleanest way I could think of to do it and get a bonus and. Help out at least a portion of increasing the density and then, as you go to smaller lots, you. There's more impact that, you know, that's that's going to be the uh one of the consequences of that, as you go to this smaller lot, you're not going to be able to avoid. Those potential impacts to the neighbors that everyone is sensitive to, so.
Yeah, I would only say that uh I'm I'm at peace at point four and I. Um, love to consider maybe a little bit less, but.
Yeah, let's move on.
Yeah, can I just give everybody a wonderful resource, just in case you feel curious about this? Go check out the parcel viewer from the state of Vermont. Um, it's it's maps dot VCGI dot Vermont dot gov slash parcel viewer. You can look up any parcel in the village and get its acreage. Um, that's how I know things that I know, so it's it's super helpful for me to visualize all of this.
Yeah.
I'm happy to, yeah. If it's appropriate, I can put put that that link in the chat. You can grab it.
Be great.
You do send that link to me, Anna, and we'll put, or send that link to you.
Cool.
Send that link to Chris and he'll put it in a minute.
Okay, you got it, will do.
Thank you.
It's a great resource.
Yeah, and I use Vermont Interactive Maps, which is another great one that the state of Vermont maintains.
Yeah.
Okay, so I I'm going to say we've resolved that question and the question of density bonuses. Um, basically below for affordable housing. Um, so I'm going to move on to section four oh four ADUs. And I guess, Chris, I'd like to put this one up on the screen, because you all, when we did this. Probably six months ago at this point, you all made. Some changes to your uh your existing regulation. Section four oh four, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
There we go.
Showed out.
Okay, so section four oh four. Um, at least a portion of it so far is up on your screen, um, there is more. Um, but we'll get to that in a minute. Um, first thing you did was took as defined it as an efficiency or one bedroom apartment, you took that out, basically statute took that out last year. So you're mimicking the state statute, so that's something that um we recommended you do, um, it's 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 what you should do. Um, for the purposes of this section, um, clearly subordinate shall mean. So um if you basically look at the the paragraph above. Um, and about the middle of it, it says um. Within or pertinent to an owner occupied single family dwelling unit that is clearly subordinate to. A one family dwelling and has facilities, blah, blah, blah. You all chose to define clearly subordinate more in depth than the state statute does. So the state statute just says clearly subordinate, you all said, well, what does that mean and how do we, how do we um. Account for that, so we added a section three for the purposes of this section, clearly subordinate shall mean that. Um, the accessory unit does not exceed the greater thirty percent of the total habitable area, total habitable, habitable area. Uh, floor area of the main single family dwelling or nine hundred square feet, we changed it from a thousand to nine hundred because nine hundred is what's in the statute and. Given that there wasn't that much of a difference, it was easier to follow the statute, um. Let's see, the accessory dwelling unit shall have a lesser number of bedrooms than the main single family dwelling unit. New construction shall be setback from the front property line at least twenty feet greater than the main single family dwelling unit. So it's going to be back from the road a little bit, it's going to have a less of a visual impact. Um, new construction shall have a height of at least twenty percent less than the main structure. So again, um, clearly subordinate, um, basically it's set back a little more, it's got a. Got a smaller height, a twenty percent less height, so if it were. Uh, thirty-five feet, let's say the main one was thirty-five feet, which is your maximum, if we take twenty percent off that, um. That should get me seven feet off twenty-eight feet. Um. Let's see, and then the last one, and I, um, new construction, you shall use divide, design features and materials. Compatible with the main single family dwelling. Um, that one may be a little hard to enforce, but after some back and forth as to what exactly that meant and whether or not it should be in there. I think that was the the compromise that. I think that was the, the compromise that we settled on, at least at that time.
I thought it had been sh- 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 sh-. Almost I, I could admit.
My recollection, but that doesn't, I forget. I have like different views of stuff on a daily basis, so. I thought we had. Because it was, it's basically not enforceable. So what does Chris do if this rule isn't? Or a zoning administrator do with this rule isn't followed?
Or if they bring in a design, it's, it's arbitrary to that person. Do what they feel is compatible, is compatible.
Well, the other thing is, is this more restrictive since there's not a material restriction on single family home and duplex? New ones?
So the answer is, um. You're using the statutory language of clearly subordinate.
Yeah.
And you're trying to define what makes it clearly subordinate. And I think the logic here is that if it's the same materials and the same design. Let, let me use the language, design features as the single family home, and it's also smaller. That's going to contribute to its being clearly subordinate, where if it's, you know, you've got a, an old, um. Victorian house in Bristol and you put up a steel box. Um, with, you know, without any Victorian type design features or, or diff- very different materials. That may stand out more than, um.
You mean like Kevin's house?
I don't know Kevin's house.
Kevin's is a, is a Victorian with a, with a box, a square box garage. So, yeah, what is, so with, you know, with, or with oil treated siding versus a, a, a.
I, I'm not really comfortable, um. Attempting to. Shape or dictate, I think we're not dictating here, but, uh. You know, it's hard, uh, design features and materials. I'm just a little wary of going in that direction, you know, and, uh, so I'm not comfortable with, with E. Um, at all. And as far as A goes, I, I would wanna say that that excludes the basement.
Oh.
Because I think. Wait, well, I think what this is trying to get at is, uh, the size of the structure that to be proposed. And, and the basement's underground, it doesn't contribute to our sense of the size of the building. So I wouldn't, I would. I would favor saying in this instance, as we, that we say, um, excluding the basement in A.
John, I think we're, I'm trying, I tried to mimic the state statute in that, and it talks about habitable, basically. Area, and if you've got a habitable basement, you've got a habitable basement, and I can't change that.
So do we?
Did we say that? Yes, yes, which is. Different than the, the footprint of every, of our zoning.
Is a closet ha- habitable space?
So Ferrisburg zoning, I wish I had it up in front of me. They, they base it on the same standards that the listers would use. When the lister, if a listers are looking at a, a, a structure, where, like four foot knee walls. Are where the beginning of habitable space begin, and they, there, there's a whole set of standards that listers use. And that's what they utilized in Ferrisburg. I don't know what those are off the top of my head.
So if, if we don't do that, if we don't have some way, I mean, this is a technique, clearly subordinate is about the overall impact of this. Structure, right? Including its overall bulk and size and height, and that's right, right? So, um. Like if we're, like, if, if. Suddenly we're allowing one third larger structures because we inclu- we include the basement. And what if somebody's, uh, you know, we're not supposed to be discriminating against people here. We're supposed to be fair housing. Or if somebody has a lot of money and they finished their basement and spend all that money to do that, and somebody has the same basement next door in the same house, but. Doesn't have that money, they're discriminated against by something that includes the basement. So I don't know how we resolve that.
Finished basements are fairly common, particularly in newer houses. My house would never support a finished basement.
I get that, but, uh, understand the impact. If we're including basements, finished or otherwise, I don't know why we can't say. Uh, a basement shop that's not particularly finished, but I go down there and work, isn't habitable, but, uh. Suddenly the basements come into play at, at two thousand square foot houses, a three thousand square foot house, and, and the rules are, you know, now.
So they get an extra hundred feet in your example, because it's the greater of one third or nine hundred square feet. So with your three hu- with your thousand foot basement in your example, they get an extra.
After three hundred square feet, thirty percent, right?
Um.
Thirty percent.
As, as I read it, it's, so if they go from a two thousand square foot to a three thousand square foot, right?
I see, and they go from nine hundred to a thousand being allowed.
It's, it's not a huge difference.
And then.
Thirty percent of three thousand is nine hundred.
Right.
So they'd be at nine hundred and nine hundred.
Thirty percent of three thousand is one thousand, right?
No, that's thirty three percent. That's a third, right? So thirty percent is nine hundreds, right?
Yeah.
And I, I'm pretty sure the statute basically references the habitable, the greater of the habitable. I wanna make sure we're mimicking.
I believe it does. I read it today.
Can, can we scroll up just a little bit so I can read all of A, cause I'm missing the first sentence, that would be really great. Thirty percent of total have or nine hundred, okay? Um.
And if that's what the statute says, I would really encourage us to use it here so that we're basically saying the same thing.
What if somebody proposes a garage and an ADU?
Which is not uncommon.
Sure.
Yeah, so their, their ADU could still be thirty percent. Or the greater of thirty percent or nine hundred of their house. It wouldn't, it'd be measured on the habitable feet of their house, not the garage. Um, so they could put it above the garage, um.
And then the structure would be limited by the accessory building size of the zone.
Yes. Yes, which can be pretty large, honestly.
But at that, at that point, in Bristol, we don't have a recourse. Somebody proposes those two uses right now in our regs.
Yeah, you, you have to mean the, so the, the building, so you're, you're confusing physical and use. You, the, the structure itself could be up to a thousand square feet, thirty five feet tall, thousand foot square, uh, footprint, thirty five feet tall. And whether you use it for a garage, an apartment.
That's another use.
Those are the uses, correct. The, the, the structure is the shell. And so whatever the shell is, then when you put inside of that shell, each of those uses have to be a permitted use or a conditional use or a site plan use. So if in that same, in that same structure, you wanted to have the downstairs as your personal woodshop. And the upstairs as your ADU. They would both have to be allowed, and they would both have to meet, the ADU has to meet these standards. The woodshop can take up as much of the remaining space as it wants, because there's no restriction.
But we don't have a path forward for that right now, do we?
What do you mean?
Somebody comes and proposes these two new uses. I want a new garage and a new ADU. What do they do? Cause that's two uses. That's not just an ADU.
So with the, the path forward now, because of, of Garfield, it, we might as well just. Put the, speak of the big elephant in the room and, and just say it, is that the garage gets built first. That has to, that qualifies. Once it is done, they then can come and ask for the use separately. There's, there's no longer, there's two separate permits.
So I, I'm, I'm no one to talk about that particular one. I'm looking for similar instances.
So I, I have a current instance, Hannah Look Riley built one on Pleasant Street. Tore down an existing garage, rebuilt it. The downstairs is her garage. Now she has, she built that, and then she came back and she applied for an ADU for the upstairs, which she built second. That's exactly how we wanna see it work, and that's exactly how it did work. Right?
No.
So, so to be clear, I, 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 I wanna, I wanna, just so I understand that use case as well. Um, is that the garage was approved as a two story building with just empty space above unfinished and the garage below.
Yeah.
And then there was an application to say, actually, I wanna convert that existing unused unfinished space into an ADU.
Right.
And then that was approved.
Correct.
So. Obviously, and this is gonna be a little complicated, right? But no one in their right mind, if they're planning on doing both, is going to entertain that project if they don't think they're gonna have approval for the second. Because the second requires septic. Among other things, right? And can my septic system handle this? Am I gonna get a septic permit? So there's obviously. That to me, never mind my neighbor across the street, like as the use case, right? It's like. That to me would seem like a disincentive. It's like, well, I'm gonna take a chance on this building. I may or may not get approval. I want to do X, but I don't know that I can do X, because the regs say, well, do one first, finish that. And then come back when that's finished, apply again. Have I interpreted that correctly?
That, that is currently how I, I recommend people do it to ensure that. The structure that they wanna convert a portion or all of into an ADU is a. Legal structure, is a legally permitted structure.
So we're talking about uses, but really the use is it's a single family. Unit. And you can put an accessory dwelling unit on there or building on there that's permitted. It's still a single family use. Unit. You can put an ADU anywhere you want, including building something. It's still a single fam- the use is still a single family unit. So depending on what the subuse is. To me, doesn't make sense that we're, we're carrying out. Carrying these things out, because it's kind of semantics. It's all single family unit use.
It's not really, I mean, in the past, and as I've said, uh, you know, the, a new accessory structure. Um, was viewed as a separate thing. So why is it not now?
It, it still is. They still need to get a separate permit for a permitted accessory use.
And if somebody.
Building or use.
And if somebody's proposing to build both at the same time, they can't, they don't have an option to do that. Because that would violate the, the state, the state doesn't address that. Bristol doesn't address that, so they can build anything they want in that instance if they're proposing both. Because we, here in Bristol, we don't have a regimen to, to deal with that circumstance, although we used to.
I'm not, I'm not sure I follow what you're saying. They, they can't do.
So. So. If they come. It used to be once upon a time until the last revision of the regs, that, um. That, uh, if somebody wanted to bill an ADU. If they were proposing to put it on top of a newest accessory structure, it would need conditional use approval. What's the problem with that?
We can't do that.
We can, because why can't we do that legally?
Well, wait, so listen to Adam.
I, I, the state doesn't allow it. If you're building an accessory, if, uh, an accessory dwelling unit can only be regulated the same as a single family use. So if you're, if you can't make, if you're not making a single family uses conditionally, you can't make an accessory.
But, but in this instance, the state is not con- where in the legisla- the language, legislative, in the statutes, does it say? An ADU and another use, like the ADU doesn't, it's just an ADU, right? It's, it's not an ADU or a garage, right?
Let me read your accessory building, accessory building or use, and this is coming from Bristol zoning regulations currently. A building or use incidental subordinate and reasonably necessary to the conduct of a principal structure or use. Accessory building or use does not include any building or portion thereof used for living purposes.
Correct, so it stands alone.
It's, so Chris is saying, come in, get an accessory building permit, basically. Once you have an accessory building permit, if you want an ADU, you can basically come in for that.
But then it seems like we're, that's an end run around what we're trying to do here, which is. Deal with circumstances or if somebody's packing it in, you know?
So, so, but, uh, ADUs are kind of a. Pack in use. I mean, that's, they're to carve out a section of an existing home or. An unused portion of a garage as a living area that wasn't used before. And in your example, I'm getting a little. Uh, confused as to why that would be any different than if somebody built their. Floor of living of their main new single family home above a garage. Cause that's multiple uses in the same instance as you're using it, that would be. Then a conditional use, because there's more than one use inside that one structure. So if a garage is attached to. A home that's different than a single family home.
I think it says nu- new accessory structures are, are what I, I, I'm trying to deal with.
Yeah.
So we, we do, so I'd like to make a motion that, that, uh, that, that we add. The language of the two thou- two thousand seventeen bylaws admitted from the tw- twenty twenty revisions. On section four oh four, back into section four oh four. If you look at that, I think it, it, it would be more permissive than the state, because it contemplates situations that the state would shut down. So for example. If somebody comes and says.
Can you read them and what?
Yeah, I'd be happy to read it. I have a copies if you wanna read along. Um, I have a few copies. I'm sorry I didn't email it to everybody else. One sec. Listen. You wanna take a moment to absorb this?
I haven't made a copy.
I would ask to put it on the record, please. Do that. When you absorb it, let me know.
You, you wanna, you wanna read it for everybody that?
Yeah, oh yes. Shall I read it? Yes, so. If you look at the current section four oh four, and then you, back in twenty seventeen, it used to continue, and it said. Any accessory dwelling unit new or existing that meets the above conditions is a permitted use in all districts, no problem. However, any new accessory dwelling unit or revision to an existing, existing accessory dwelling unit. Requires a conditional use permit if it results in, one, a violation of any of the conditions above. Two, a new accessory structure. Or three, an increase in the height or floor area of the existing dwelling. Or four, an increase in the dimensions of the parking areas. And five, neither unit is owner occupied. So in my mind, uh, so anyway, my motion is to adopt this exact language, uh, that was, uh, excerpted from the twenty seventeen bylaws. Back into our regs.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, discussion. So I would ask Adam. Of these five conditions, how many are they all? Within, um, what the state allows in the statute or no?
I don't think so. I don't think you can do it. I think basically the Home Act said. That you have to, if you're permitting a single family dwelling unit. In, in an area, then you have to, you can't. Make an accessory dwelling unit subject to any more conditions than that single family unit.
If that's all it is.
I, it doesn't say if.
But no- nothing in the legislation says ADUs and garages, right? Just says ADUs, right?
I, I wouldn't go there.
You, but, but it doesn't make, it doesn't set any more.
But, but Adam, with all due respect, just cause you wouldn't go there. The language doesn't say that.
Violate the statute. Honestly, I would never recommend this.
It's more permissive than statute. For example, for example. Number one, under the language I proposed adding, a violation of any of the above conditions, one of those. Above conditions would be the building is already a duplex. So under the state rules and under Bristol's regs as they stand today, somebody comes. Applies for an ADU on a property that already has a duplex. They're out of luck, dead ends. They have no path forward. If we added this language, then. Maybe they could have an ADU, but they just have to go through and see what everybody says about that. Maybe there's a way to make it. Uh, a fit. So they can have a conditional use permit and go forward. Another example, just another example. Somebody comes along and says, I wanna build a new ADU and a new garage as part of one building. Um, uh, according, because you guys don't see that the garage as something that. I guess it doesn't need a permit. It's just something that can be done. It does need a permit, but it gives it an administrative permit. It's still a permit. Uh, in this instance, if you notice the language, number two. We would have had a way forward for that person on Garfield Street if he had come and proposed a garage and an ADU, because number two says. Uh, you can't do it unless, uh, uh, if you have a new accessory structure, you can get it if you have a conditional use permit. That to me is more permissive. It allows a way forward for that guy. And, and might get another ADU built. That's more permissive than the state. Uh. And, uh, same with owner occupied. Maybe there's a, a scenario we could see where, uh. Um. Somebody could do that. I'm not sure. I'm a big fan of that one, but, uh, I, as the whole thing, I mean, I don't see how the.
Okay, so.
That's how I see it.
So I just wanna clear for one thing, the, the single family, you said a duplex would be allowed? Based on the definition of the be, first half of four oh four, it's very clearly stated it's part of a single family home. So thus the conditions wouldn't be met for a duplex.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So if somebody already has a duplex, this would be more permissive. It would allow them to go. It would, because if they have a duplex that exists.
So I'm gonna.
Where they're locked out because it's not a single family home, they can't have an A D U. This would say, here's a path forward.
Twenty seventeen regs in front of me says an accessory dwelling unit. Shall be defined as an efficiency or one bedroom apartment located within or adherent to an owner occupied, single family dwelling.
Right, but it and that doesn't.
So okay, so so we're gonna call the question. What do you, uh, you have any comments, Rob? I'm not gonna call a question. I wanna go go around for comments and then we'll vote. Are you? I don't think we should make it a conditional use because the number one of a violation of. You lay out the definition and then having something that says, if you don't meet any of these, you can still do it, it's a. Conditional use, uh, you're basically calling. Most of it a conditional use then and allowing it. Everywhere, I don't think that that's a good practice or. That just gets really muddy really fast. I don't think we should roll back to that. That's my thoughts.
Slim? I I'm a little confused on this one. I'm still thinking. Thank you.
Uh, Shannon?
I. I'm still a little confused also, but I feel like it's um. Muddying the waters.
Bill?
I believe we should leave it as is.
Anna?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. My apologies. Um. I I just, I I think about the the application process. And if we're trying to encourage accessory dwelling units and trying to get more housing in our village. Um, the fact that you have to start a project, stop it. And go reapply if you wanna do, you know. What what happened across the street here or what was proposed, but then not really a possibility on Garfield. It. I I think that if it were possible legally to include it. Um, that would be great. I I will defer if in fact. We feel like, oh, if we include this, then you know, we're. We're violating the statute, but I'd like to hear more about that if in fact that's the case.
Do you wanna? Embellish it all?
Yeah, well, um, the the Home Act was just just passed. Basically says that if you permit a single family residence in an area. That you also have to permit sick A D U's and that the. Conditions upon which you permit them cannot be any more restrictive than the single family residence. So for example, you could not make an A D U a conditional use. If the single family residence is not a conditional use. I I really think it's. Very cut and dry.
Well.
So we'll vote.
Well, I haven't had my say, you went around. I did, and I'd like to conclude.
Okay, conclude.
If if these, if this provision I'm recommending had been in place when the Garfield. Street thing happened, you would have had guidance. You you said in public hearing that you didn't have guidance. This would give guidance. It would prevent that from happening right now. Because this is a limit, this is no longer in our regs. That opened the door to what happened on Garfield Street where nobody's happy, property owners not happy, the neighbors aren't happy, the town shouldn't be happy about it. And uh, and yet it's a huge loophole, a lesson we can learn from that we could close with this language.
So let's let's also the que- the question, the motion on the floor, if I believe. If I understand it, the motion on the floor is to adopt. These five criteria that John brought up and discussed. So if you're voting yes, you're voting to adopt it. If you're voting no, you're voting to not adopt it, not adopt it. So all those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Three? Those opposed?
No.
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 So how many no's have we got?
Three, I think you got three.
Bill, Shannon, myself, Shannon, myself. So. You just six. Six, okay. So I need to vote, huh? Hmm, I'm not in favor of it. Cause I am concerned. That um. These things limit the ability. To get a permitted use, so they. Vote is four to three. I guess it's.
I guess. But it's not. Well, if it's got three things for it, the change isn't gonna pass, but you also have not necessarily said. Yes, we'll accept what's written in here, the changes that are written in here and let's move on.
Do we need a, do we need a motion or can we agree? I think everybody, there, I thought there was a majority against leaving E. In there, but I didn't really hear anything else on any of the other. So do we need a motion to omit E then? Or thumbs up? How you wanna do it? You wanna get formal or not? I don't, I don't think we need to. Is anybody in favor of keeping E in the language for A D U definition?
I am.
You are?
I am, and even if it's not. It's just uh, at least sends sends the message that we would appreciate some. Consideration. Aesthetically. That would fit into the neighborhood. Now, can this be broken by a lawyer or something? I don't know. But I think most people probably wanna get along and do. You know, they're good village citizens, and this would remind them. To be compatible with their neighbors and so that they're being uh, good neighbors. So I I don't see a problem with it. It just says compatible. I mean, I know it's very vague, but it can only help, in my opinion. Doesn't mean we have to be Woodstock or someplace, you know, it's just compatible. Meaning not incompatible.
I I can see your point, Slim, that that. It, although not enforceable, I mean, I I can't see how anyone could enforce this. This is really a matter of taste and opinion. But to a kind minded individual, they might read that and say, oh, okay, they. They're asking me to think about putting something in that looks like it could have been there, fits in, you know, however they interpret that. That word compatible. Um, I would have voted to take it out. But I can see your point. I don't think it does any harm in the sense that it is not enforceable.
It it's litigation bait. Is is my point on this. This is, if somebody does not like a project. This gives them the the loophole they're looking for for litigation to stop the project. That's my only concern with it. They don't like deciding you're putting on the on the project. They can say that it's even, I mean. It's arbitrary. If if you wanna say it has to match, I'm good with that, because that's enforceable. This arbitrary feel good stuff, that's not zoning.
Yeah, who who'll make a motion on it? I'll make a motion that we remove E from. The definition there. John, get the honor. Any discussion? More, any additional discussion that we haven't covered? Um, okay, we'll move it to a vote. All those in favor of removing it, raise your hand, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? One opposed. Okay. Whoa, do you have anything else about A D U's?
Okay, um. I'm gonna assume we're ready to move on. Um, unless I hear differently from you.
What's next?
Okay. Next we get to hotel in this facility definition, then business yard definition. So, are you gonna share that, Chris?
Yes.
There it is.
So, um, we've discussed this a little bit. Uh, whoop, that's hotel.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Okay, um, at the meeting that we discussed it, um. Basically, the, we did not come to any conclusions. Um, the board asked. Anna and myself to try and create a definition that we felt would work in the best interest of the uh. Of the town of Bristol. Um, this is the definition that we came up with at that time. Anna, would you like to say anything?
Um, I think we had a a a. Pretty thorough discussion, um, you know, and and I think going back and forth about, you know, whether or not. You know, how would you demonstrate, right? Um, and I think that that. Um, we're hoping that with this language, it's clear that that, you know. Um, there is actually someone on staff and that information is is um, is accessible. Um. Open to ideas. Um. I mean, obviously, I I I appreciate that the word demonstrate and the word timely might be open for debate. Um. Um. But this is sort of where we where we landed. Um.
Won't remember.
Uh, that is one of the things that we did do, Adam, right? Is that we said, yep, we're gonna do this. And and that the compromise is that it's a conditional use everywhere that it's, that it's permitted, right? Where you can have it in and guess facility, we were gonna change it to say. It is a conditional use, and that's the compromise.
Yes, that is correct.
And that way, the demonstrate. Right, will come up in that conditional use process of, well, how are you going to demonstrate if you have this person, oh, we're gonna post a sign here. And we have a Q R code there, right, and a number you can text or however you're gonna do it, right, and then. Timely can be a a topic of discussion with anyone who decides to come to that hearing.
So if you look at the uh, the use chart on page fourteen, we did propose that. In the Village Business District and in the H D R District, it go from a site plan to a conditional use. It remained a site plan use in the Commercial District.
Commercial is the same as Village Business or?
No, no, that's C one, that's.
That's C one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Predominantly outside of the Village Business planning area.
I mean, it's a fair point to say it could consider having it be a conditional use everywhere that it's allowed and then it's consistent.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I I I think we've given all too much thought to the benefits of not having a. A resident manager or owner manager. Uh, I think there are a lot of benefits to having one. And uh, that includes people who wanna, you know, giving people a stake in where they live. Uh, that people who want to be in the place they wanna do business. Which I respect very much. Um, and um. To me, this feels a lot like spot zoning. Um, it just feels like there's no, nothing that recommends this except one request to do it. I don't think we've bumped into any other problem with within anywhere else and um, I'm concerned that uh. That, you know, non-resident, you know, distant owners uh, may not be as attentive to the needs of the neighbors in downtown Bristol. And uh, so I think that would be a rationale to to keep it as it is.
I hear your concerns, John. I think that um. There's different ways to. Have that stake or provide that level of assurance that everybody's looking for, um. And. I could see the economic impact of having. To be owner occupied as opposed to simply. Having somebody on staff at all times, you know, uh, there's. Doesn't take up a lodging spot to have somebody working a desk theoretically, and I get that there's cost implications to that too, but. Far less for what you, if you're a lodging facility, losing a lodging compared to. That, um.
Losing a lodging but gaining a home. I think the idea. How do you compare those expenses or costs and benefits?
Well, is it just one lodging spot to, if you wanna make a home with a family, say. Is one lodging spot gonna be large enough or will you have to take out more than that and not? I couldn't live in one lodging spot with a, as a family of four, uh, without losing my mind.
Right?
I don't know, well, I mean, we have.
Only one advocate for this from the outside, how would it affect?
So I think that just to, just to reel that back a little bit, John, we should be looking. As Anna had said, and I hooted to very lofty when we took public comments, we should be looking. Globally, we're not looking to, we're not looking. Um, at a case specific rule to make a case specific ruling, we need to be looking at this globally. As to what makes sense for the town. Is this potentially a hindrance to new businesses coming in?
Yes.
Why is that?
Because when you. You're not gonna be, no one is gonna be building in here. A new building in downtown Bristol, they'll be converting a current building to that. That's what we did. They were, it was an apartment building, we converted it to seven rooms and suites. It's not. If you, so you're limited in space, it's gonna have to be a small property, a small inn, it's not gonna be a big hotel or anything. And if you, um. I think the unintended consequence of this is that you will make it more difficult. For uh, people to uh, to create in apartments. I mean, it's close, I mean. We can change it back to apartments. Um, and I said, well, there's more housing, that's a good thing, but the inn. Brings a lot of people into Bristol who spend a lot of money, you know, restaurants, the stores, it's a good economic. Uh. Stimulus to have in in downtown Bristol. I think you mentioned that people have to live in the uh, the B and Bs. Have you noticed there's no B and Bs? It's not economically viable anymore. To have, cause they, they they're living there and they have one or two units, but. Um, you know, if they could turn the whole thing into an inn, it might make it viable. Um. You said there's only one person who's bringing it up, it's because, well, there's only one inn in town. And the other people probably aren't reading this or um, don't understand the impact for the future. That, you know, you may be limiting, um, you know. We're um. We're not gonna be doing this forever, uh, you know, we're gonna be retiring and. Um, I think I'd like to see the inn continue, and it has a higher probability of continuing. If you, um. Don't require somebody to 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 live there.
So you mean easier to sell for you?
Probably, yeah, it would be easier to sell.
Sounds like spot zoning to me.
Well, the the owners of the.
Can I, can I interject something important which in in the conversation, just for context?
Chris, anyway, Chris was gonna say something, can you wait till Chris is done, please?
Yeah, so the owners of the Tillerman currently, um, were hoping to break their house. And the business into two separate parcels. But they aren't able to do that. Because then it violates the in rules that they would have to be in-house. So they've been forced to keep their, and this was from an insurance standpoint, so. There's a lot of reasons to allow it to be separate. This was just another example, we wrote for another example of where it may be viable. And those are owners that are are planning staying. Um, so, it's my decision.
So, sorry, Anna.
Hi, again. Go ahead, sorry, I I thought it was gonna be my turn, I apologize.
It is, yeah, Anna, it's your turn.
Okay, so I I think that it's important if we're really gonna be thinking about this. Not as spot zoning, right, but really thinking about all the applicability of all of this. We need to consider that this, this is something that would be either site plan or conditional. Um, use in many districts, right? I- if you look at the chart, it's it's the majority. And so, um, it it could very well be a scenario where. This could actually be an incentive for someone to be like, oh yeah, score, I can actually do this now, right? And I I don't mean that like someone's coming in with a business. Um, so I I think we need to look at it from all the perspectives, not just at two existing businesses and how it's impacting them. I'm not dismissing that. Um, but I think it it, that is considering two particular individual known cases. With known operators and owners. As opposed to the theoretical ten years from now, what could we do? Um, so I I just wanna advocate for whatever we decide. Needs to be something that that is going to function now, and with an unknown. And with an unknown new business owner who might actually want to build something new and not live here, but live in Burlington. Um, that could be okay, but I think we need to look at what what does that mean? Those key words about demonstrating the manager, right? And timely manner, those are the key things to me, not the Wells family and the owners of the Tillerman, with all due respect to them.
So we can take, let's take some closing comments, and then I will, let's move to action on it.
I just make a comment about the spot zoning. In some ways, it seems like this isn't really zoning at all, but you're kind of getting into business management. Um, that, you know, how does whether the manager is there or not, or lives there or not affect his own, I'm a little confused by that. It's not a requirement in any other place of business. And I think one thing we may not realize is that the power of reviews and the internet. I mean, if you, whether you live there or not, if it starts becoming a hot sheets place or um, as Chris had said, that was the impetus of this in the beginning, or it gets run down or it's noisy or chaotic or whatever, the reviews will kill you. I mean, the, nobody will come, because uh so it's it's an incentive to the innkeeper not to do any, you know, to be the, you know, good neighbor, to watch here, what's going on, to take care of the building. Um, you know, that type of thing, so.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor for this?
I don't think we're almost forward. By way of closing remarks, though, I mean, I would like to see as much attention given by this board to the needs of the neighbors and adjoining property owners nearby, one of whom I am, in full disclosure, in this particular instance. But uh, it's interesting that I don't hear that much said about that. And and in a dense part of town, downtown, where we already, you know, enjoy the greatest density in Bristol. Um, there ought to be some protections for for people who have taken that on and um, you know, invested in that. And I would posit that uh their concerns and their interest and the potential impact on them is as important as the, as the inn owners. So I hear very little of that in this, in this discussion.
So we move to a formal vote or thumbs up, how we wanna end this?
I was, may I speak? I haven't said anything on this yet, but the obviously, the timely manner is a is a phrase that doesn't help me much, but I I'm thinking of the the patrons of this establishment and the need sometimes for information from a local source, and that would be the manager sitting at the desk downstairs. And these could be people from different countries or or whatever. Um, and if there's an incident, as the word incident, which could be an accident, et cetera, to have some immediate help, not a, you know, timely then means very, very quickly. Um, so mostly, I think, I've been thinking thoughts like that, that's all. Having a in-house person is is a safer situation for not only the neighbors, I guess, that John cares of, or is talking about, but also the people who are coming to the establishment. Thank you.
Okay, so am I, I'll entertain a motion on the ish, on the group of definitions? Cause there's two, right?
Oh, we were just talking about that one.
There's a hotel one too, so.
We, since we are making the change to um, the inn um, about basically having someone, we we thought that a hotel is a larger uh to make them consistent and as a larger venue should also have someone on, basically available to respond to the needs of either their neighbors or their uh um, guests. So we basically put duplicative language in the uh, in the hotel to make it consistent with the uh, the change that we were proposing to the inn and guest facility.
So, has anybody got a belief to make a motion? Enough of a belief to make a motion?
I would move that we table this.
Okay, you wanna second that?
I'll second that. I don't think this is relevant to en- encouraging residential density, which is the main premise of our work right now.
Any discussion?
So we were trying to fit this in with the changes, any changes to the UDR need to be voted on by the public. So we were trying to piggyback on the same timeline, otherwise, we're looking at a timeline of another revision and public comment and hearings in another six months after this, or a year after this, or ever. Uh, as things go, because there are things that we have talked about when I started seven years ago that are not resolved yet, just the way things go. There, those obviously aren't critical path things, but uh, just the nature of stuff. So I think that, my thought is, this is something that we can figure out and come to an agreement on, on this timeline.
Okay, I I need one clarification, though, please, for this. When it says personnel on duty, does that mean onsite or? By their phone? Quote-unquote available by their phone, or something like that?
Didn't you say on the call?
It said on duty.
On duty, is what it says.
Again, does that mean in on location?
So one of the other things that we did for this um, was basically we made it a conditional use. And this will go before your development review, any uh, a new um, in guest facility would go before your development review board, and those would be some of the questions that they would ask. And those were, and and they would make their decision as to uh, they have, they have a lot more latitude than a zoning administrator. Um, they're a, you know, basically a body of uh Bristol citizens, and they'd make that decision.
You're saying we're not making the decision on what personnel on duty means?
Uh, that's right, I'm not. If you want to be more specific, you can. Um, I I can tell you, I I would uh interpret it as meaning that there's somebody, somebody available that um, can be called or can get to it quickly. I don't think there has to be somebody sitting behind the desk.
Really, this is, your consultancy is about densification, right? So this is another issue. Different issue. Right, and the motion on the floor is to table this, it's been seconded. I'd like to call a question.
Okay, so all those in favor of tabling this, raise your hand or say yes?
Yes.
Yeah, group three. All those opposed?
No.
Two, three. Three and three, so three again. I say we keep talking about it.
So the, the, so you think of on duty, one way to, and we see it all the time, and and I use them all the time, it's Airbnbs. You've got one, I mean, it works well. If I I have issues, I call and and the manager, I mean, I have people, we've had issues where we walked in, there was no heat. Within ten minutes, we had somebody on site, so I I feel that that works well, but that's just my two cents on a real life.
Smaller scale.
So let's, let's go back.
Seven, eight, or ten rooms, or whatever.
Let's go back, is there somebody that's willing to make a motion to uh, accept or apply these definitions? There's two of them, one's in guest facility, the other one's hotel.
I'll make a motion to accept these revised definitions.
I'll second them.
So is Rob, and then Shannon second? Any final discussion?
Yes, will this uh? Does this give a clear path to the proposal of this to just, is, are they all gonna be on the clear as far as their compliance with the regs at this point?
You mean the initial request here?
You you mean Tom and Carol Wells, let's, let's just, use, let's use real words.
This being proposed by ourselves.
Right, it was brought to us by by Tom many moons ago, and Carol's here to give us clarity, yes, they proposed it. Um, if that is what the regs are, they would, that would then bring their facility into into compliance.
Cart blind.
And allow the the Tillerman to do what they wanna do, correct?
Now, if if they still want to pursue that fact, yes, they could, they could go down that path again.
What am I discomfort? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say that if if we're moving forward with this, to vote on it, um, I would like to make it very clear that a hotel requires someone to be there in person twenty-four seven, it's a hotel. I would be very uncomfortable with hotel with on duty at all, to all times. That's a distinction quite apart from the inn discussion. But I I think that that that's an important distinction.
So are you making a motion to amend then?
I'm making a motion to amend the hotel definition, to say that um, on-premise at all times.
Okay, is there any, the need to second for that, right?
I would second that.
So actually, John Beach is slim. Any discussion? On full-time staff of some sort, or a hotel?
On premises was the, was the proposal, right? And take out on duty and replace it with on premises.
That was my proposal, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of adding of the amendment, please say aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Two nays? Were you a nay? Bill and Shannon. Okay, that sounds like a passes.
Well, that's the amendment passes.
Amendment passes, correct.
To the hotel.
To the hotel. So now, the motion on the floor as amended is to accept the proposed changes to inn and guest facility and the proposed changes to hotel, including the amended, the the amendment of of staffing required.
I would speak to that. Uh, oh, do you, I'm sorry, were you asking for a motion? Right, so that's on the table. Uh, my discomfort to this partly comes from, and lasts from the fact that when it first came out. And then again, at a subsequent meeting, two different meetings where you were asked specifically, I asked the chair specifically, where are these quotes from in your presentation of this to us? And that, and I, while you didn't say there was no earlier communication, you demerited in in such a way that I found misleading. And it put me on edge about why you would be misleading about that twice. Two different meetings, and Chris never spoke up that he had gotten it, and Adam, he didn't speak up that you had gotten it and forwarded it to Chris.
We had that discussion, but you asked me to forward you those.
When it first, when it first came up, I asked, yes, I asked, where is this coming from? Do we have something in writing? You said no in so many words. The second time it came up, months later, I also asked, do we have something in writing? Is there something that these quotes are coming from? And you also led us to believe that, no, there was nothing. And then it comes out of the woodwork recently. That's when we had that conversation. So I think that it gives, leaves a bad taste in my mouth. It sure doesn't comport with the behavior that you proposed during our organizational meeting where we deal with each other straight up, does it?
I, I don't know, sometimes I don't talk specifically enough. I I apologize if I misled you. It has been on the parking lot for months.
That's right.
And you at one point, twice, twice chose, attempted to take it off the parking lot, which we said, no, we um, we um, have a request to have that considered as part of the bylaw. So we're getting into, we're getting, we're getting way past. The question is, we've gone through this thing, and as everybody knows now, the background. Everybody knows now that we are trying to do something that is universal, is is something that can be applied against various situations. So if I misled you, I'm sorry.
Twice you misled us.
Okay, I'm sorry twice, Sam. So, and I, I didn't mean to make this some big cover-up or anything like that.
Well, why didn't you come forward with that when it was first asked? So we're, we're.
You, John, I think you said we're gonna leave it in the parking lot and just went all.
No, I specifically asked, if you review the tapes, I specifically asked, do we have something in writing about this? And you, in so many words, said no, and then the second time, months later, I asked specifically, I'm I'm noticing the quotes that you put in your chairman's notes and summarizing this thing in the parking lot, it's got quotes in it. And I asked, where are these quotes from? And again, we don't have anything in writing, nobody's put anything in. We didn't hear about Tom's letter until recently, is that correct?
If I didn't say succinctly, I apologize for that.
You don't think that's correct?
No, but.
That's not how I remember the conversation.
When was the first time we heard about Tom's letter?
What does this have to do with the question? What does this have to do with the question that's on the table?
It has to do with my discomfort with why I I don't understand the deception that started this and and that has left a bad taste in my mouth about this.
So I would like to call a question, we're, we're.
Right.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
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 Sorry, I was, I was gone for a second. Where are we?
So we are voting on the motion as amended for an inn and guest facility and a hotel. Three ayes?
Or?
Four? Four ayes? Anybody opposed? One opposed? Anybody abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
We have one abstention, okay.
See, the math isn't working fine.
So it's four, four, one and one.
If I may, I'd like to offer some context for the abstention. Um.
Okay.
I was not privy to the prior conversations about this and the initial introduction of this, you know, um, whether it was something that was sitting in the parking lot or not. And so I I think that that, that makes it hard for me to to see it in context and how it was considered. I would also say that, you know, if nothing else, we could split it out, I think we're all in agreement on hotel and approve that. Um, it looks like we still have some discussion to be had on the inn part.
It it just got a break.
I was sorry, that wasn't clear, I apologize.
It's okay.
Well, that takes care of that one.
Where footage of accessory buildings? Oh, excuse me, how did I skip that? Um, so this one has not been approved by anyone as well. And we had comments in here earlier this evening in your public comment section. Um, again, at the meeting that we discussed this, um, the uh, board asked Anna and myself to um, try and address it. Um, I would tell you, the language that is in here is is mine, Anna and I had a long discussion about it, but I think at the end she was unable to support um, this. Um, so what you have is basically my recommendation. And Anna, I don't.
To clarify, my, yeah, my, my, my lack of support was trying to arrive at a definition of business yard and village mixed. I don't support um, a business yard and village mixed, and so I just couldn't get there with Adam. He and I had a great conversation, but that was our conclusion, so.
So there you have it, the things that we changed, or or that I guess I should say I changed, or am recommending that you all change. Um, we, I tried to take out some of the uh, I guess I'd say the the vagaries in here. So I took out the reference to or similar heavy equipment. Um, so also took out the heavy or similar businesses. And where the majority, um, so or similar businesses, um, clarified business yards. Um, we talked about storage as as one of the things that they were doing, so I added it there explicitly. Um, and then we added basically, um, business yards do not include um, regular ongoing sales of equipment or materials. Um, trash, recycling, garbage, or large-scale excavating businesses that do not constitute business yards. Um, so tried to trim it down a little bit. Um, recognize that you had historically had a lot of industry in the Village Business District. Um, and that you're trying to bring uh, Um, and that you're trying to bring um encourage new residential development and trying to basically find a a place that worked. Um, so that would be my, the logic behind what I put before you.
Do we have a definition of large scale excavating business?
Um, I think we also changed this to or is conditional use. So again, it is something, let's see, let me make sure I'm speaking before I uh before I open my mouth. Um.
In the current regs, it's conditional use.
In the current regs, it's so we let it, we left it at the same. Um, there is not a definition of large scale excavating businesses. Um, but as a conditional use, it would go before your um Development Review Board and remember the first criteria is, is this basically appropriate in this district?
This is what it's taken, it's struck from the definition now, right?
What's uh, large scale, basically it's saying large scale excavating businesses are not appropriate.
Right.
Right.
So I had, oh, go ahead. I I would just follow it up on that. What would would that make the current business yards? Nonconforming and just be left in limbo there until they move?
It depends on whether or not they're large scale and in the context of Bristol, I didn't feel like we could necessarily define that. I couldn't define that for for this, so I left it there.
So like there's two potentially large scale ones in town currently? And that's where that's where I'm at is trying to trying to get things in conformity so you can do things or make changes instead of just kicking them into nonconformity and leaving them in limbo. Um.
Because we have two business yards for businesses that would have like excavating equipment approved. And one that's going through the process as we speak.
So what are the ones that are approved?
Um, you have Acker, uh, Hewitt Road and across the road from that, you have um, Smith McQueen.
So I I'm concerned, are you, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
So I'm I'm concerned that we're taking that function out of the definition because it does provide a very valuable resource in the community. Nobody wants it in the backyard. So I had come up with a sentence to add back in, if you will, or modify it, saying construction yards with every equipment and then in perends with typical use of ten yard or larger dump trucks and ninety five horsepower or larger excavators or similar equipment shall be sited with direct access to a paved road. So I think a lot of the discussion has been around, in in my mind, is the appropriateness of travel. So if you put the yard on a road, a paved road that has inherently or assumed, maybe assumed is a better word. More traffic, so it wasn't, doesn't stick out like a sore thumb as opposed to the rural area where some of this stuff is being um, you know, causing problems. Um, I think we can, I think we can work that type of yard back into the definition.
I share the concern with Rob that large scale is undefined and I just look at that as litigation bait. I don't know how you enforce that, so I would not approve anything that includes that phrase in it unless somewhere else it was clearly defined what that is. Uh, it's just too much of a loophole. Uh, also, uh, I'll leave it at that for the moment. I have another comment, but it'll come back to me.
Anybody else? Um, Slim?
Well, about this large scale excavating, w- would it be wrong to just eliminate large scale? And wouldn't that then be read as a a regular, uh, say, construction company does some excavating, but they're not an excavating business? Or is that just too?
Would would Livingston's would probably fall into that and they have another yard somewhere.
I tell you, anybody that's in Bristol is not large scale. Well, I don't know, are they?
Well, no, you you look like, okay, the guys that are doing the water line, Munson's, that's large scale. ECI is large scale. Masterson, it's got a lot of trucks, but he's not large scale.
So in other words, it'd be a loophole for anybody in Bristol.
I I think that it's like a loophole. Saying large scale and not having something that defines it much major minor subdivision are arbitrary until you put that threshold on there.
I agree.
So we got twenty five.
And there's a related thing is, you know, like I could make a case uh, if I were a lawyer, maybe I would, that uh, construction related trades include excavation.
That's my point.
Yeah, so so we have a problem. I mean, one thing we can learn from in considering this is the experience that we have already with the applications that have been made under this definition currently. Um, arguably, both of them are um not really compatible with the zones that they're in, mixed and and uh RA five, I think. And argue against that statement myself. Well, you can go live next door if you want and see how it goes, but I've talked to the neighbors and um they don't feel it's compatible and uh uh, if we're encouraging, you know, at least in the mix zone, um we're encouraging densely packed development and it just seems like idling trucks and anything having to do with excavating type of business just doesn't really fit. And in RA five, maybe slightly different, some more elbow room out there, but RA five is really primarily about residential uses. And that's why when a business yard unpermitted popped up next door to them, they were they've been bothered by it because it has an impact. That's a real impact that they're living. Not some abstract thing. So, uh, yeah, I I think we've got to think about it more. Um, I've definitely not down with the large scale because what is that?
So one of the things I, when I was looking at this one was the town plan itself, which is supposed to be your guiding document when you write your zoning and place zoning. Um, under your uh, economic section, your goal is Bristol will attract and retain businesses that are consistent with the town to provide a balanced economic base while ensuring economic stability of Bristol residents. And the first policy says encourage retention of existing businesses and cultivate and attract new businesses that are consistent with the town's character. Um, excavating, there's at least half a dozen active excavating businesses in our town. If you, if you remove excavating from this option, there's no place for them to go.
C one?
No, it's not. But if you change the definition of business yard, there's no place for them to go. If you remove it. If you change the definition, this says what it says here on this, right here, that the words excavating would mean even in C one, if you say you can do a business yard in C one, you can't put an excavator in C one because of your definition. So.
I think, yeah, I get that, I get.
Chris, Chris does have a point. The definition applies everywhere. Yeah.
Which is why when when this conversation started, I I proposed just eliminating this from the from the mix and the RA five for the time being till we could get it, you know. To prevent more of these applications coming forward till we could spend some time on it. It's not really about densification. So that was my effort to say, let's deal with it when we're outside of the densification conversation. But let's not leave it open for more of these applications that come in that prove to be so problematic.
Shannon, you had any comments?
Sorry, I um I am uh, up in the air on this. I guess I'm with more with Chris on this, where I want to think that uh I think the business yard description needs to include not just that high density area or um, those other areas we've been discussing for this, the purposes of the excuse me, grant. But in general, I mean, we're a blue collar town. And I think that you have to consider that that we're a blue collar town. So there's a lot of landscaping, there's a lot of excavating. There's a lot of construction businesses here and so that's our bread and butter. And um, to look at that in terms of that description, we need to think of it in terms of all of the areas, not just the high density areas. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Um, Bill?
I think if if we're going to be uh, reasonable. We have to make more, we have to make plenty of allowance for businesses to get started here and to grow here. And not restrict them to the point where they can't grow and then they either go out of business or move to another town. So I'm for more, in general, more flexibility. And more tolerance of traditional ways of earning a living.
Um, honor.
Now, I think I already played my hand at the beginning of the conversation, but you know, if 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 the task before us is to make our village more attractive to people who want to create housing and have more housing density, we need to try to be able to consider that in in balance with the other things. I'm not saying I don't want businesses in our town. If there's no place to work and no business here, then, you know, what's what's supporting our economic infrastructure, but I I I have a hard time with looking at even at the revised areas that we have said are village mixed. And and saying, okay, like let's, you know, try to get people to put up a duplex or, you know, um, maybe a multifamily here. And, you know, provide people with a place that they want to live and take advantage of living in this great village. And next door you know, is diesel trucks and gravel piles and excavators coming and going all day. Um, I think both are important, but I don't think we're doing a good enough job of saying which go where and how do those live together? Um, you know. Um, and I say that full well as a person who is lucky enough to live in a lovely home in the center of the village, surrounded by other lovely homes in the center of the village. This will never affect me. But I I want other people to be able to live in Bristol and have a really great quality of life living here. Um, that's hard for me when we then say that you could have, if if we if we do nothing, you know, and I don't know how how much of this we're gonna approve or not approve, but you know, there are some business yards that it wouldn't be a big deal to live next door to. And then there are some business yards where you wouldn't want to build anything there. And if you live there already and you invested and you built housing. And then what happens next door is you know, it's gonna make the quality of life for those people such that they don't want to live there anymore. Then what does that do to the business of the owner who developed that property? Who's relying on the income and, you know. That's a really hard balance. Um. I did like the paved road piece, though. Um, I think that was a really nice addition. Um.
Just an example of a business yard that does have housing near it or very close to it and is actually seeing um, sales that have not been impeded, Heffernan Shaw down off Hazel Drive is a contractor's yard. They 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 work on their equipment there, they have it there, they have stockpiled materials there, their machines have been out. There's eight, nine homes that all are, you have to drive by it or could see it from there. There's a multifamily house on the within eyesight of their property that would be impacted by it. So there's an example where it does work and um, they they have some of the neighbors that are living in them have been there for a long time. So that's just an example where one does work well.
I I'm just looking, I'm just looking it up, Chris, so I can have the visual. I appreciate you giving a real example.
Yeah, well, there's a real example also. Um, lower notch road.
Okay, let's 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 move to the.
Where's really not working?
There.
Right, where.
So we have a definition proposed change. Uh, we have a proposed addition to that definition. Um, so I guess the first thing we do is consider the proposed change or addition to the definition. And then we'll consider the definition.
I would propose, I would move that we strike large scale from the last line of this proposed definition.
So it would re trash, recycling, garbage.
Or excavating.
Oh, you take out the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
There a second to that? Hearing none, um. It sounds like it stays. I would, I can't, can I make a motion?
I think you can.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we add. You see trash? I would, I would make a motion we remove large scale excavating businesses from the last sentence and add to the definition, construction yards with heavy equipment. And then in parentheses, with typical use of ten yard or larger dump trucks and ninety five horsepower or larger excavators or similar equipment shall be cited with direct access to a paved road. Still have classes of roads. Where some paved roads may not necessarily be equivalent to.
Put a class in here.
Classes, a class three road could be paved or not paved. You just don't know.
Right, but class two is paved, right?
I believe a class two road is paved. Yes.
But I don't know which or which.
Yeah, how about, what about state highway, something like that?
Yeah, well, you've got, I thought about that, but then you've got Burpee Road. Um, you've got Moncton Road, Silver Street, whatever it is, you've got some pretty heavy hitters that are paved. Where the traffic out of a, any excavator business in Bristol wouldn't be noticed.
Sure.
Like North Street, maybe?
Well, we could have a business yard right on north. Rare to do. A new one.
Isn't this good?
So. You're looking for a second.
I'm looking for a second and I'm not hearing one.
I'll I'll make a second, Kevin.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, yeah, because the the ancillary or next part of this is which zones we allow this definition to apply to, correct?
That could be part of the discussion after, well. Yeah, so it makes sense to go through the definition and then if we want to revisit the areas, the zones, it's the zones themselves.
Okay.
Makes sense. You should be happy with the definition.
Okay.
Any other discussions? So all those in favor of adding the clause about construction yards with heavy equipment? Raise your hand, say yes.
And removing the large scale excavating business, right?
Removing the large scale excavating business, yeah.
And you're putting in your night, your addition, correct, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
We've got three.
So large scale excavating business would come out of the last sentence and then there would be another, an additional sentence added that basically uh, said businesses with with large uh, equipment and it would define large equipment as trucks greater than
Ten yards?
Ten yards and excavators greater than ninety five horsepower?
Yes.
Um, need to be on a paved road. Okay.
I'm a, I'm a little ignorant here. When you say ninety five horsepower, can you picture for me the size of that machine, please?
So that's a so like the one that the town has.
Okay.
The mini S, that's a small one. So ninety five horsepower or larger would probably be the middle sized equipment that Munson's been using on Pine Street. Not the small stuff over there, the medium size and obviously the big stuff is. Not the small stuff over there, the medium size and obviously the big stuff is near.
Right, so that like like the one that Luke Hallack li- I mean, I know him and he lives near me. That's a small one, if you know that one, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a mini.
Okay.
So I think we started to take a vote. Can we say yes, so those in favor again?
Yes.
No.
No.
Anna, were you a yes or no?
I would say yes.
Just voting present.
But this is just just changing the definition, right? There's a secondary discussion about the zones, okay.
And those opposed? And John, you're standing. And then abstentions is one.
That's correct, I was opposed.
Yeah. Is that all of them?
Yep.
So it does pass. It becomes part of the definition. So now we need to, uh.
Email me that at some point. Oh, you already said.
Yeah, I. I can do.
Please send me that document so I can have that to the minutes.
So now we need a motion to entertain the definition.
Oh, I thought you were.
I would move that 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 we strike the definition as a, as a, as a. Um, any kind of use, uh, that we prohibit that use in mixed and in RA five.
So when when you're confusing uses with the definitions.
I got the definitions.
So did we approve the def?
I think you did.
Did.
Yeah.
Oh, we did.
Yes.
So it's not getting late or anything. So then I guess the thing we do next is decide which districts it's appropriate. And I would move.
I wanted to make. Go ahead.
I would move that we uh, remove it as allowable use in the mix and RA five.
I'll second that.
So that would be commercial only. Correct.
Correct.
And do we wanna add it anywhere?
Well, that's not my motion.
Just, okay, I hear you.
Sorry, can I possibly see on the screen? Um, the districts again?
Yep.
Thank you.
That one or do you want? So it would be this pink area here.
Here and that's the only area we're discussing?
That's what would be left if we remove it from Village Mixed and RA five. Village Mixed is the orange. That uh, Chris is hovering over now.
Okay. Can, I'm sorry, can we make it slightly bigger for those of us who have bad eyes?
Kinda do, I'm trying to do it all. Is that better?
Yes, it's better.
So the motion on the floor that has been accepted is we remove it from. Village Mix and RA five, which leaves it in. Commercial. Office commercial or just commercial?
Just commercial.
C one.
C one.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful.
Any discussion?
Wanna make. Yeah, I wanted just to to clarify the example that you gave, um, Chris of where. Um, a business yard works well with residential. Was out on um, Hazel Drive. That's like. That's in RA five. Is it, is am I right about that? Um, and so the density there would be different. And this was our our previous argument than Village Mixed as proposed.
It's actually an RA one.
It's an RA one, okay.
Or RA two, two, sorry, my bad, it's RA two.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to look at what the density was there, so.
It's two acres.
Yeah. So that's different. Just. Just wanting to make that point. I just wanna make sure I under understood the the example.
Okay, any other discussion?
I think that's too limited. That that takes out. A lot and that puts existing ones. Out of importance, Ken, doesn't it?
Well, their grandfather.
We're still not applying, right? It doesn't mean they can do anything that, that means they could do nothing else, no changes or anything else. They would just have to shut down if they wanted to do, even change what they're doing, right? Kinda like a non-performing duplex, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
I agree with Rob on that.
We have a motion on the floor. Although, let me see, let me get the phrasing right. Is your motion is to remove. It had a village mix and RA five. So if you're voting for this motion, you're removing them. If you're voting against this motion, you're preserving it. Everybody clear on that? Okay, all those in favors, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
And it's like two. All those opposed? Shannon, was that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's me.
So two, four, one opposed, we. No, Anna was also a nay. Three opposed, oh, no. It was Anna, I had Anna, John as as nays and I had Rob's, Slim, Bill and Shannon as as yays.
I mean, that would start the way. You got to count right, just.
So that means it doesn't carry.
Correct, correct.
Can I now make a motion to remove it from Village Mix alone?
Motion on the floor for Village Mix.
Seconded.
Seconded by John. Any discussion on that?
I'll say that that's what I would have wanted in the first place.
By hearing that.
Is that, is that just putting one in limbo?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, more than one.
These acres potentially, I mean, acres moving to middle area, he's. So that's probably a done deal there and nothing is. So, yeah, one, one would be definitely in limbo.
Okay, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of removing Village Mix? As a use for a business yard? Uh, raise your hand or say aye.
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 Three? Three yeses? Those opposed?
Nay.
And three. And we are increasing. And Village Mix is we're increase, increasing the. Density to high desert, high density residential.
It'll basically be four units per acre.
And it encompasses. With Rockydale and. Down on the flats, uh, two road, two road. Flats up through Burpee Road. Now, the the orange, the pink here is commercial.
So it's just removing from the one dash.
Oh.
Not ain't, the landfill.
That doesn't really seem compatible with a higher density residential to me.
Yeah, I. I guess I gotta agree with that.
Is that your vote? Or not?
A yes, maybe. I hate to restrict, I hate to restrict uses, but I I understand. So I have to say yes, I guess.
And think about it as protecting neighbors. Maybe that's a good way to turn it around.
I, yeah. Yeah. And then what else have we got?
What was that res- resolution of the vote? I'm sorry, Chris.
It was Slim, John and Anna was yes to remove it. Rob, Shannon and Bill were no. Kevin voted yes, so the motion passes four to three.
Thank you.
Well, deny that in braces in public. So this next one. Uh, was something that Fred had originally proposed. And as he was leaving last meeting, asked that reconsidering. Um. So I took. To the best of my knowledge, and at the bottom of the chair, no, she. Came up with a table of all the setbacks that we currently have on accessory buildings. And I guess the question on the floor, if I can lead you to it, Adam, is do we wanna change it or not, so?
Me. So not, not to. Money, what Fred's question was about the application of the square footage, wasn't it? Whether it be footprint versus. The usable area or livable area or however you wanna define it include to count the floors in a square footage.
He did have a struggle with that, but I think he was struggling with accessory buildings in general.
Okay, I understood that that's what he was advocating.
And we're too much into it.
I I don't.
Yes, hi- his his concern, and again, it comes back to, and.
Yeah.
Is. The building is, has a twenty one hundred, I mean, a twelve hundred square foot footprint. But in his mind, it's a twenty four hundred square foot building, because it's two stories. And he would like, his thoughts would be to. When you talk about lot coverage. Or maximum size of building, base it on total square footage, not on footprint.
But we're pretty clear in that the regulations that we're talking about building footprint, that's correct.
So the question, it would be, do you want to change that for accessory dwellings?
Except for building.
Accessory buildings, excuse me, accessory.
Cause it already applies to accessory.
So accessory structures don't matter, right? They're not, nothing if you put an ADU on top of them.
You have to get a permit for them. And then if you have ADU, you have to get a permit for that.
It sounds like an in run around.
So the question is, are are we all com- are we all okay with that? The one, the one thing I would bring up is. It's the maximum height is not diminished on accessory buildings. In most districts, except. We did for an ADU and I. I think that's a little inconsistent.
I I would stand, I'm lowering accessory buildings. Down to twenty percent across the board.
Yeah. Not opposed to accessory building being shorter than than the ma- main building, twenty percent of the. May, do you, do you word that as twenty percent of thirty five or twenty percent of the existing main structure? Main structure, not existing, but twenty percent. Less than the main.
Of the primary structure. You you, so the verbiage is consistent use primary.
Okay.
Consistent with what we said for ADU, for, yeah, do have the document, use primary all the time. Okay.
So.
Do we have a definition of how we're, we're calculating the height?
The the maximum height would be thirty five. And then other than that, it would be twenty. Percent for the accessory of whatever the. Main building, so the primary building.
Do we count the basement towards height?
No, it's it's from, it's from grade, it's a walkout.
That that's what I would, we can look at the, the definition.
Vert- vertical distance measured from the highest elevation of the principal side of the proposed or actual finished grade of the building. To the highest point of the roof.
Okay, that's what I was after. So if if you sit slightly on a hill and your house is up higher, right, then we're looking at. You know. You're looking at your house and saying, okay, and then if the accessory dwelling or the accessory building, sorry. Um.
That's the structure.
Yeah, accessory structure, right, then it's, it's gonna be. We're looking, I just was curious exactly how we were measuring that, so that helps a lot, thanks.
If you, if you.
Okay, sorry, can you, if. Chailing Melissa a little bit here, but I I'm thinking of the people in one story houses. Might have a difficult time even making a reasonably sized garage. Under some of the, under this percentage. Rule, perhaps. And would not perhaps a. Figure. A minimum figure be. More fair and also work like. Twenty seven feet or twenty five feet or whatever you like.
Let's go to you. Set a maximum and then it's for accessory, cuz then if you do, say twenty eight, which is.
Twenty percent of thirty five or.
Right, and then, and then you have a hardware, a single story home would put on a garage with a. ADU above it, a two story thing, if that's what they wanted, a two story building. A garage with enough. Room to put a hoist in or something, whatever.
Get a couple of those.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be subordinate, would it?
Those, do I, do I hear a motion to do something about this? Are we gonna pass and people?
I like it. I just need to find a a better way to phrase it to address exactly. What Fred has kind of asked about, but to honor what what Slim is considering too. Um, and it, I mean, it's tricky because. If, okay, okay, just, just a garage and you have a one story primary residence. Then, yeah, it's, it's, that that could get kinda tight, um. You know, um. But at the same time. If you have a three story home and you're close to the maximum. And that's a pretty big building that you're putting up right next to your neighbors. I I don't wanna make convoluted, but. Could we do something about stories and height?
Stories are arbitrary, not arbitrary, they're hard.
First in garages, cuz if you have a peaked roof. That's lofted and you can say you have another twenty feet in peaked roof, you know, above your top story.
Yeah.
I I like the height.
I mean, I I I think my, I think my garage, my original carriage house is taller than my house. You know. And I have a two story house.
So.
Maybe the wording could be something like this, you know, twenty percent less if we like that. Or. Certain number of feet. Sort of like the square footage or the floor footage or the living, isn't it the living space for the ADU? Um. This, it could be up to thirty percent, but a minimum of, at least get, no matter how small your house is, you get nine hundred feet. So in this instance, you can be subtract twenty percent from your, your uh, maximum, the height of your building, or you get at least.
How high would you need it to be?
Whatever, whatever's appropriate. I don't, I don't really know.
No. I'm trying to, no, I I agree with you, Slim. I'm just trying to do the math in my head. It would, it would all depend on the roof pitch and the square footage for how high that pitch goes. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what that minimum number is.
I would tell you to go with twenty eight feet. It's twenty percent less than thirty five and.
And just be done with it.
Um, you can say, you could say that, well, if you say the greater of. Somebody's gonna pick. The greater of every time, but I think twenty eight's, if if a story is, is basically ten feet. Twenty eight feet basically gives you plenty of roof pitch. For us, for an accessory dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
Or.
I think the distinction, not to nitpick here, right, is if I do a certain square foot. Building with a pitched roof, right, so it's a certain size and a lot of that height is a pitched roof that's pitching in. That feels very different. Right, next door to someone's home, right, or their fence or their yard, than a building that goes. As tall as possible and has a very low pitched roof and takes up way more. Of that physical space, right, that blocks out more light. of that physical space, right, that blocks out more light. Um it it just, it has a different impact.
It seems why the old regs considered those two different things because of the additional impact of putting two uses on top of each other. Get higher, an ADU might be one story. That's fine, but you add another use, it might be two or more, so.
Any thoughts on how we apply it to accessory building for maximum height?
I don't really, I mean, it seems like right now people are building accessory buildings that they know they're gonna put an ADU in, so then they just do that. It seems like we're forcing them outside around the block to get to where they want to go anyway. We ought to bring them in so that it gets done well.
So what's we're talking about? Do, so let's hear a motion here for something, let's do something.
Alright, I'm gonna come up with something, I'm gonna come up with something, right? Is that we're going to to talk about, and I, someone would have to help me with the feet, right? But if we said or or the percentage, right, for this accessory structure and and to say that that no more than so many feet of it can be the actual vertical walls versus the pitched roof. So I'm just playing, like if you said, okay, you could have an eighteen-foot tall building, for example, right, whatever we we kept, whatever that percentage is, but only so much of it can be vertical wall and then it has to pitch in. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to play, right?
Tell you to make it similar to your other regs and you have a maximum height and and I think Slim was on to something about uh basically if you wanted to do a greater of, so the greater of um twenty percent less than your existing structure or twenty eight feet.
But if you allow, if you allow this, you're not gonna, you're gonna have ADU structures, no, not subsidiary in any way to the original.
No.
But you're gonna, you're gonna get the garage ADUs.
Yeah, that's that's exactly the point. We're getting them already. We had this disaster going on Garfield where somebody wanted to combine uses, which normally would be cool, but so did the regs didn't have any guidance from the ZA.
We already have agreed upon a height restriction on ADUs at twenty percent of the main structure, so you, the whole ADU scares, I don't like the drill or not.
Well, that's just an ADU, not with an accessory structure underneath it, right? It's an ADU, period, not ADU plus dot, 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 right?
So you're saying.
To be fair, I think John might be right. But I think you could interpret it that way.
Yeah, ADUs are not a magic wand to uh uh make other uses disappear just by adding one on top. You can't say, no, this other
So in in my mind, if if you had a house that was, that was thirty five feet tall, your maximum, this is just easier math for me. And you built a under a current, under what we're proposing here, a accessory building that was thirty five feet tall, same height. And then you propose an ADU, you would not be able to put an ADU in it because it it is not twenty percent lower than the height of your existing primary structure. That's how I would interpret that. You could not, because the use would not be, the the structure would no longer be conforming, and you can't create a non-conformance.
Oh, you can't.
Yes, I have, yes, John, I fucked up and I and have allowed it to happen. I'm sorry for language.
The point, the point is, no, that horse is not dead if you live next door.
So time, time, let's, let's get back to the question here. We, it's like ten o'clock, we're almost there. The question is, do we want to adjust the maximum height on accessory buildings?
How about we say accessory buildings can be single story? You know, usable story, and it doesn't obviate the pitched roof or doesn't elude, exclude the pitched roof and if you want to have a two-story one, it's a conditional use, nice and simple. It's, we're talking about accessory structure, why not? But an ADU, the implication of the state's use of ADU is a and ADU, not a combined use with something else.
We're talking about.
So if we just, if we said accessory structures could be one story with the with the roof, um then double stories could be a conditional use.
If I can make a motion, I'll make a motion that we will reduce maximum height on accessory buildings to twenty eight feet.
Will that have any effect?
Sure.
People still be building, like going around the zoning process.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Nope, okay, so let's move on. Um the other thing, it was a Fred question, is in section three twenty two, exterior materials on zoning applications. Okay, so that's it. Is there anything else? Do we need to do a formal approval?
When you're ready to send it to public hearing, you should do a formal approval, yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve proposed zoning and then amendments.
I'll second that.
Somebody's gotta move it for a little bit. No, I didn't sound I've asked for a moment, oh, so Shannon made the motion. We hear a second?
Not, not to drag this out, but can we see them all together? Because I think there's some that we made a while ago that I don't recall, and I apologize for that, but.
Everything should be in the document that I sent over, other than the changes that we've made this evening.
I think I'd like to see it all as one document.
With the, with the exception of what was done tonight, it is.
With that, you're gonna have to come up with an emerg- a a you have a hearing in two weeks.
Okay, all right, that's, that was good, my other question, what's our timeline?
Well, you could do it, you you could have a Zoom-only ten-minute hearing just for that question. Oh, nothing happened. Ten minutes of planning. That would be your, you'd have to do.
No second. And you'd have to do it soon, at least fifteen days prior to November seventh.
So I will, is the motion still on the floor?
Yes. Motion on the floor.
I will second that motion.
So Shannon made a motion, Rob is accept- accepted to approve the proposed changes to through the zoning bylaw. Any, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. One, two, three. Those opposed? Three opposed. So I say yes. It's four to three.
Okay, now, I can make all these changes, make sure, you can make sure I get them right, and I can get them done by tomorrow. So you'll have them tomorrow.
It's kinda late tonight.
Tomorrow afternoon.
Fair enough.
Okay, and then, so we, if we get them tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow is Wednesday. Thursday, I might have a pocket for most of the day, fed members. So Thursday, we should, Thursday, how long do we need to take one final look? Can we do it Thursday?
You, you have until Monday, you you can't, Monday's fifteen days, right?
Monday's fifteen days prior. The seventh, correct?
Yeah.
First one's seven. So thirty first, twenty fourth is fourteen, twenty third is fifteen.
Monday.
Monday, Monday, okay, so let's do this. If we get, Adam gives us this stuff by end of day tomorrow, by end of day Friday, if anybody's got any clarifications, email me where those clarifications noted. And depending on what happens then, we will have to have a emergency meeting Monday.
You have to do a Sunday.
Well, Monday is fifteen days.
You don't count the day of the meeting, so Friday is kind of your last day.
Okay, so then, Adam does this stuff, end of day Wednesday, end of day Thursday, anybody that is unclear as to what the modifications were, or think they're inconsistent with the discussion, and the day Thursday, and then send them to me. Copy, Chris, but don't send them out to everybody. And then based on that conversation, we'll make a decision whether we have to have a meeting Friday to hash it and do one more final approval. So everybody, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
I am, okay, so then I would like to have a motion to table B uh public notice and communication, I will send out to everybody communications that have been drafted today, John's done some and I've done some. Um review them, send comments back to me, and then um we will start putting out what's agreeable to everybody.
Yeah, so the the public warning went out today. That had to be in the paper today in order to meet the deadlines, and that was drafted by the chair and sent to the Addison for your first hearing.
For both hearings.
Well, I I I I know that I had to have it there today.
It's written up for both hearings, but um obviously the first one is.
So. So your outreach and any social media stuff is what you're, is your, what you're talking about going forward.
Then um we got minutes, last minute, so let's table the rest of the agenda. Then, may I get any objections, objections about that? Okay, well, thanks for hanging in there.
Do adjourn?
Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second, okay. Your guys in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, we better do public comment. Jimmy's good, okay, so then we're back to being adjourned. Have a good night, thank you.